The meeting open and I will ask for a motion to adjourn the open meeting temporarily with the intent to return to open meeting after our executive session for the purposes of contract negotiation, strategy discussion. And anybody can then say so moved.
So move.
Excellent. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Timlin?
Hi. Timlin Rossius, I, sorry.
Brad?
Brad Austin, yes.
Matt? You're muted, Matt.
That's my line.
Matt Hunt votes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Justin McCarthy?
Justin McCarthy, yes.
And Mike Fontana votes as well. We are now going to adjourn the open session. I'll see you all. Can we just close this and come back into it later, Dorothy? Like, can I? Just to catch everyone up, we actually started this meeting at six o'clock. We immediately voted to stop the meeting and open session and go into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiation, strategy discussions. We have since adjourned that executive session. We now need to entertain a vote to reopen the public meeting.
Make a motion to return to open meeting.
Second.
To get a second on that, thank you. This will be a roll call vote as all our votes are roll call votes while we meet remotely. Matt Hunt?
Matt Hunt, yes.
Timlin Rossius?
Timlin Rossius, yes.
Brad Austin?
Brad Austin, yes.
Justin McCarthy?
Justin McCarthy, yes.
And Mike Fontana votes yes as well. Before we get started, I was going to read this interesting message. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to open or reopen the August 27th School Committee meeting. The town of Littleton began conducting remote participation Zoom meetings pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law on March 19th, 2020. Since that time, unanticipated legal concerns relating to the open meeting law have been brought to our attention by the town clerk. Those concerns were supported by the Attorney General's office and confirmed by town council. One concern is that the chat function allows a parallel text conversation to a board's public meeting. Chat is essentially running commentary that is occurring but is not moderated or followed by the chair. All participants and listeners may not be aware of comments being made because some meeting participants joined by phone who do not see these conversations. Another concern is conversations between residents within the chat room which are not incorporated into the public record. In response to these concerns, the town will implement the following changes which in no way prohibit any member of the public from participating in discussion and sharing information during a public meeting and will ensure that all listeners and participants have equal access to this meeting. People that join the Zoom meeting are set so their microphones are muted. If you called in by phone, please use star six to mute or unmute your phone. So that the meeting can occur in an orderly fashion, we ask the people who join keep their microphones on mute so background noises do not interfere with the meeting. If you wish to participate in the meeting, please use the raise your hand function available on Zoom or if you called in by phone dial star nine, which will activate the raise your hand function. The meeting host will notify the chair of the raised hands and the chair will determine whether and when to allow public comment. When called upon, participants should unmute then state their name and address. After speaking, we request that the participant return their microphone back to mute. All right, thank you. Can we start with the consent agenda, the minutes from August 20th, 2020 and oath to bills and payroll?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2020 and the oath to bills and payroll.
Second.
All right, motion made a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes or the, any of that? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Matt?
Matt Hunt, yes.
Timlin?
Timlin Rossius, yes.
Brad?
Brad Austin, yes.
Justin?
Justin McCarthy, yes.
And Mike Fontana votes yes as well. We are at the beginning of the meeting where we have input from interested citizens. We will also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for input from interested citizens. Just so we know, the, on our agenda is a discussion on our meeting with the Board of Health and a joint meeting that we have planned next week. So if you have specific questions about that, you can wait till then and we will open up public input at that point. We also are going to have a discussion on busing registration and busing fees. So if that's something you want to talk about, you can talk then. We'll have an update on public health metrics. So if you have specific questions related to that, you might want to save it for then and we will, we will allow for public input at that point. We also have a presentation on how athletics may unfold for, for the fall season from our athletic director, Mike Lynn. We'll have a discussion about that and possibly about athletic fees. So if you have any questions related to that, hold them then and we will open it up for public discussion. But at this point, if there are any citizens who would like to speak before the school committee, this is the first of several opportunities. Just use the raise your hand function and our mediator, Dorothy Malone, will get you in front of us. Are you muted, Dorothy?
Yes, I saw that. I did. That's my line, Mike. I don't have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, terrific. All right, under old business, the Board of Health is the topic. So we had a meeting, the chair, met, I met with the chair of the Board of Health and one of the other members on Monday. It was a good conversation, talked about the different ways the two boards are going to work together as school approaches reopening. We have scheduled a joint meeting next Wednesday. That is the Board of Health's meeting night. We are posted for that and we'll be meeting as a committee with them to have a public discussion about the roles and responsibilities of both boards and how we're going to proceed as school reopens. I would like to entertain a discussion about whether we feel we need to meet the next night in a school committee meeting or if we feel we can take a week off given that we've been meeting every week and we will meet with the Board of Health in a full public meeting the night before. Thoughts about that from the school committee members?
I think we got a pretty full schedule next week, so maybe just to give everyone time to get adjusted, the teachers will be returning. So we'll have probably more to report than next week.
All right.
I agree. Maybe we should, with the Board of Health, that should be our big thing next week.
I think our most important information we might want to deliver next week would be the public health statistics and the tracking and we'll cover that on Wednesday night. So I'm okay skipping if.
Yeah, that information will be available as of the meeting. That's a good point, Brad. So as long as we can get that out there or make comment to it, I think we should be fine for the week.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be cutting a little close. It's a seven o'clock meeting that, that information gets released between like four and five PM, but I, it only takes twenty.
It only takes you ten minutes.
Yeah, twenty, give me twenty, but I can make that work and, and we'll make, I think that's an important part of the discussion. So we'll make sure that that's ready. Kelly, is that okay with, with the administration?
Yes, it is.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so we'll plan accordingly that we'll meet, we're posted for Wednesday with the Board of Health at 7:00 PM. It is a Zoom remote meeting and then we'll go in from there. Any questions or input from the public on meeting with the Board of Health next week? And I see none. Okay.
No hints.
All right, under new business, we're going to have a presentation or at least not a presentation, but an update from Beth Steele who met with some members of Lowell General Hospital. Beth?
Yeah, so we had a connection, which thank you to school committee member Justin McCarthy who got us in touch with a contact at Lowell General. And so we reached out this week and had a conversation with Tracy McPatten, who is the Director of Emergency and Urgent Care Services at Lowell General Hospital and Circle Health. And in conversation with her, there were a couple of immediate steps that we could do to kind of create this partnership for Lowell General and their resources to come and help us and support us to start the new, the new school year off in a very safe manner for staff and students. And so there were two immediate steps. The first was to do a walkthrough of all four of our school buildings in which Tracy and today we had Tanya Brown, who's a physician assistant at Lowell General. The two of them came and walked through all four of our buildings with us and they made suggestions and recommendations of safety procedures and protocols that could be in place to ensure a safe environment for everyone. And I will say that three main takeaways that really were, you know, jumped out at me during the walkthroughs today, I'll just go over them quickly. First was to take away the opportunity to gather. So any opportunity like, for example, large circle tables where students want to pull up chairs to sit together, take away any opportunity of that sort to try and ease that, that temptation to be together closer. Second large takeaway is that less is more. So the less furniture, less spaces or surfaces, excuse me, better word, less surfaces that can be touched because surfaces that can be touched have to be cleaned and sanitized. So less is more in that idea. And then the third main takeaway, clear and consistent protocols across, of course, across the building, but as much so across the district as well. And so that was really helpful to have that time today to be able to walk through the buildings with Tracy and with Tanya. So we really appreciate them doing that. The second immediate step that in my conversation with Tracy was that we could have a consultation with our nurses, with someone at Lowell General in order to support and/or supplement safety training that we'll be doing in those first 10 days. And so in addition to those two kind of immediate steps that we can do, they have offered support with regard to if any questions arise as they do have infectious disease experts and doctors on staff. So if we have a question, we've kind of now opened the door to this partnership with Lowell General, which is really wonderful. And so we can access them and ask them questions if anything arises. So we're really grateful to have this connection. It was really nice to meet them in person today and walk through the buildings with them. So we really appreciate the time that Tracy and that Tanya, as well as our building, our nurses and administrators took to go through the buildings today. So actually I want to pass it off to Jason Everhart, Mr. Everhart, Principal of Middle, the Littleton Middle School right now, to kind of just share some specific protocols that the middle school has put into place that were highlighted today during our walkthrough. So Mr. Everhart?
Sure, yeah, I'll, it'll give you just be a brief overview, but one of the things that we have really been working on is a task force, spending a majority of our time really talking about, how do we limit movement? How do we limit, like you said, Beth, the gathering spaces? How do we make sure that in the course of a day, that our students are safely distanced, that our building is, is safe? And that we're limiting as much possible exposure as we can. And so a lot of it will start with, and I'll just kind of run through quickly the day. As students enter the building, the first thing they'll see as they hit the front doors are large face masks required signs. Now, an administrator myself or Mr. Lavangi will be waiting outside, so we'll be doing the eyeball checks as students come in, but that'll be the first step. As they go through the front doors, we've placed every six feet, the safe distance markers so that students, just like in the grocery store, can begin practicing that. So in those spaces where they might tend to congregate and the lobby at the middle school can be one of those places that we can usher kids along. They will go right to their classrooms and the hallways, we're in the process of marking those now. The first floor hallways have all been done. We'll get to the, the second floor hallways tomorrow. Every six and a half, seven feet, we went a little extra just to make sure, to provide that little extra space, is a bright yellow and black sticker that says, stand here, six feet, six feet. And so that goes all the way down the first floor hallway and all the way back. We're dividing the hallways much like traffic lanes. So as students enter, we'll use sixth grade, for example, as students enter the hallway, they'll travel down the right side of the hallway and head directly to their classroom where in previous years they would hang out in the cafeteria, they would get something to eat, socialize. We've taken that off the table. They'll head right to their classrooms. When they leave their classrooms, they'll come down the right side of the hallway, but it'll be the opposite lane of traffic with the idea that if they need to cross over, we're going to operate this a lot like it's, it's traffic school. If they need to cross over, just like making a left-hand turn, we're going to ask that students wait and wait for a break in the, in, in the group and then they can do that with the others safely distancing behind. You know, with the, the hybrid numbers being small enough, we should be able to accomplish that pretty safely without a lot of buildup. One of the things that we talked about as a task force group is limiting locker access or eliminating it for the first part and then opening it up to some limitations a little bit later on as weather permits. But we're going to zip tie the locker so that students can't even have access to them. That way kids aren't putting things in there. We don't have to worry about custodians cleaning those areas. When they go to the cafeteria, they head down the hallway, again, following those safe distance parameters where they'll enter the cafeteria. For those that are familiar with the middle school cafeteria, there's four doors that enter. There's a set of double doors in the middle and then there's a door to the left and right. We're going to close those center doors and, and put markers down with supervision, stanchions, everything that we have to, to move the traffic so they're entering the cafeteria through the right side. The steps that lead down into the lower level of the cafeteria are broken up into three main areas. We're going to rope off the middle section so that students aren't crowding around trying to get to the front of the line. We're, we're going to keep it nice and orderly. Using the, the social distancing markers, we're going to ask everybody and, and with proper supervision to, to stand appropriately. But one of the great things that we're going to do is really make the lunch process very, very quick. I met with John Overcash this morning for about a half an hour to review lunch policies, issues around allergies, you know, just speed, ease of, of food access. So the students will enter, they will have a grab and go lunch that'll be into, in a to-go box. So they won't really touch anything. Their name will be on it. The students will get the, the lunch. We've, we're going to reduce the, the lunch options so that it makes it nice and easy for kids. They'll still have choice, but they may not just have as many choices as they had in order to expedite the lunch process as well as breakfast. Kids will not be able to touch condiments or flatware or any of those things. Those will all be handed to them by the cafeteria workers. One of the concerns we had was around spillage and one of the suggestions that John had would be to place the to-go containers along with a milk or a juice, the condiments into a bag with the container so it was easily, easy to handle and easy to travel with. That bag would also be then used to put all of the materials in at the end during cleanup and for easy disposal to try and limit those messes. So that's really how the lunch program will work. We've gone the extra steps too of really sitting down with our front office staff. They are the front line in our building and anyone who comes into the building, that's the first place they go and they're understandably nervous. And so we really, we sat down earlier this week and mapped out our protocols. And so one of the things that we're going to do is really limit the access through the front door to the office. It's a high traffic area. As people go by, it opens up our secretaries to increased exposure. So we're really going to limit that to the case of emergencies, student or staff or otherwise. Staff that need to get their mail or to come see me, there's a separate side entrance into the office. They can come around the backside so that our, so that our office assistants aren't overly exposed to these, to, to potential pathogens. We have other setups in place with markers in the office, Plexiglas to protect them. So the office is really going to be on an as-needed basis. For students who say need to use the phone or ask a question, staff that have a question, one of our office assistants has a sliding window right next to her desk, which, which people can stand safely distanced and be able to speak and get their information without coming into the office. The whole idea, and this, this goes against a lot of what schools are like. The office is a hub of activity. People come in, they like to get to know each other, hang out, laugh, joke, tell stories. We really have to take that off the table. The congregation of, of adults can't happen anymore than, than it can for the kids. And I think that's one of the things that we're really looking at at the middle school is modeling the, the very behaviors that we want to see in students. We have to monitor those ourselves. And I know I've spoken in a staff meeting recently about mask wearing. We have to be just as vigilant about wearing masks because we're asking the kids to, right? So even if we think we're in a place where kids can't see us or we're alone, we have to remain masked because we would expect the kids to do the same thing. So there are plenty of other ways that we're going to, we're going to keep people safe too. One of the things that we're going to ask parents to work with us on, we get a lot of parents who want to bring lunches because a student forgot their lunch or a book or a backpack. In previous years, student, you know, parents would be allowed to come in, enter the office, sign in, drop things off, talk to a child. What we're going to do right for, for the time being is we're going to place a, a six-foot folding table in front of the school and that's going to be the drop-off location. So if you have a bag, a lunch or other materials, you'll simply be able to drop the, the materials there, buzz the office, let us know that you've dropped something off and then we can come out and get it a little bit later. But that way we don't have people entering the building through all hours of the day. And that's really one of the things that we want to do for the safety of our staff and our students. We want to make sure that we're really limiting the visitation that happens. When students need to be dismissed, for example, we're going to ask that parents wait outside as opposed to in the lobby and we'll dismiss those students. Anybody else, vendors and things like that will have similar protocols. So everything that we're doing is really built around limiting the amount of people that come into the building. When they are in the building, making sure that, that the directions are clear about where they should be, where they should not be and, and where they can move within that. And we've been really successful, it seems, to, to create a flow of students and staff and others in our building that I think is going to go a long way to really helping out the problem of that kind of exposure. And so as we continue to add these things, and I'm sure there are more that I've not spoken about here, and Beth, please remind me if there's something that I've forgotten. I'm really proud of the work that our task force has done. I, I will say, our task force, Matt Lavangi, Angie Gresko, Diane Tricana, Amy Tatro have been phenomenal, like above and beyond because they're really looking at it from a different kind of perspective and it has been so helpful. Our parents on our parent task force have been incredible with their feedback. And so all of these things we have taken into account and really tried to implement their feedback, their questions and their thoughts because I will say as a, as a newer principal, you know, I look at the building and the operations through a certain lens, but other people have different ways that they see it and it's been incredibly helpful for us to be able to approach the work that we're doing from that perspective. And so I'm, I'm really proud of the steps we've taken to create a safe environment for our students. I wouldn't go so far as to call it an NBA style bubble, right? Kids do have to leave and they return, but outside of that, it's as pretty close as we're going to be able to get in Littleton and, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done in, in keeping our students and staff safe.
Awesome. Thank you, Jason, for giving that update. Lynn, I would love for you to just pipe in about that second immediate step with regards to contact with the nurses.
Sure. So I was also very impressed with all of the work and being able to walk through all the buildings because it was really, I'm, I'm still, I'm still being able to get acclimated to the buildings. But the nurses have been working very hard throughout the summer on putting together the, all of the proper protocols and the training and training materials. So right now what they're working on is a set of guidance documents that are going to go out to families so that, families and staff, so that everyone has a tool at their fingertips that they can reference. That includes all of the protocols and procedures that will be used. So the docs, documents are going to mirror one another so that all, everybody has consistent and cohesive and comprehensive information. So we're in the midst of putting all of those protocols and procedures together and getting ready to provide the professional development to the staff in the next coming weeks before students arrive. So in addition to that, we also are going to be offering some supplemental training. We have a subscription to Safe Schools platform, which provides a comprehensive and very, very exhaustive volume of, of online tools and resources and training modules that staff can, staff can complete. So I will be assigning those modules, some of them as required trainings and some of them as optional and supplemental trainings if staff are looking for additional or supplemental information in professional development.
Awesome. Thank you, Lynn. So we were really appreciative. Thank you, Justin, for putting us in contact. We feel even more confident moving forward, having these, you know, connections with Tracy and with Tanya and being able to have that. So thank you very much and we look forward to our further connection with them.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the school committee on any of that information?
Just glad it was a worthwhile exercise.
Brad?
I have to say thanks to everybody who's been working on this. That's really thorough and thoughtful, Jason. Thanks to all your team.
All right. Very good, thank you. Also on the new business, Dr. Clinch, do you want to give us an update on how our remote only numbers are looking for the incoming students?
Sure, I'm going to actually turn that over to Beth since she's the one to crunch the numbers just before the meeting. Just a couple of comments. I, I did have an opportunity to spend some time with Tracy and Tanya today as well. And one of the, the most meaningful takeaways for me as a superintendent is, is they commended us on, on what we've done in creating safety protocols and routines in our schools that will keep our students and staff as safe as possible. That was an affirmation that, that meant a lot to, to all of us since these two individuals have, have a lot of experience at restructuring healthcare departments and, and urgent care centers in, in preparation for servicing clients with COVID-19 or suspected symptoms of COVID-19. So it was, it was a great connection. Thank you, Justin. And I'm thrilled that they've offered their services to us and we can phone them up anytime and they'll provide any advice that we're looking for. So we're, I feel really good about the direction that, that we've set.
All right, thank you. Some information on those remote learner numbers?
Sure, so we'll start districts and then we'll go smaller groups. So as a district, we're looking at 494 students, which is 30% that are going to go remote only. Looking at school based, we have at Shaker Lane, 36% of the population, so it's 145 students. At Russell Street, we have 33%, which is 130 students. At the middle school, we have 35%, which is 141 schools. And at the high school, we have 18%, which is 78%. Um, excuse me, who, 18% which is 78 students total. Sorry about that. Going back by, by grade level, so if we go back down to Shaker Lane. So at the pre-K level, we have 21% that's going to be remote. At the K and transitional, so kindergarten transitional level, we have 35% that have chosen to go fully remote. Grade one, we have 39% fully remote and grade two, we have 41% fully remote. At Russell Street, again, as a school, it's 33%. By grade level, grade three, we have 33%. Grade four, we have 32%. Grade five, we have 34%. For the middle school, again, 35% is the school as a whole. Grade six, we have 44%. Grade seven, we have 40%. And grade eight, we had 21%. And for the high school, again, 18% as a whole. In grade nine, we have 20%. Grade 10, 19%. Grade 11, 19%. And grade 12, 13%. So quick numbers, but that's the general overview of where we're looking.
Appreciate that. The reason that we don't have it in the packet and broken out and presented is just the timing of closing the, that. But I would ask if we could just get that kind of presented in, in document form and then we can put it into the packet and also sent to the school committee members so that we can all take a look at it. That would be great. All right. Any questions or comments from the school committee about those initial, the initial presentation of that? Brad?
Yeah, I would just wonder if, if Beth wants to respond to it, just it seems this is pretty consistent with what the survey results had suggested. Do these numbers correlate more or less with what we anticipated and what we had started to plan for?
Yeah, so I would say yes, it's, it's pretty reflective of what the survey data that we've been receiving and so we've been planning for. And now with more concrete numbers, we can start to really get into the more nitty-gritty of the planning process with regards to cohorts and schedules and calendars.
And I know we're getting a lot of questions, or I am at least, about like school, teacher assignments and stuff. I assume this will give us some of the background we need to start making those type of decisions?
Yeah, exactly, Brad. So with this information, the principals, and this is, this is the information everyone's been, you know, really wanting to get in order to be able to make those assignments possible. And with this, these hard numbers that we have, we're able to do that and finalize that.
Thank you.
Justin?
Yeah, so we did, we did decide, or I believe I've heard that at least K through five, possibly six, that if there would, that we were going to basically, there would be an opportunity to create remote only classrooms. Is that accurate?
Yes, that, that is, Justin, K five, not six.
Okay, I knew there was a question about six possibly fitting into that because of the scheduling of classes. So as the numbers are coming in, to me, it sounds like it's a class and a half. Is it a class? Is it two classes? Is there any concern about the remote only classes having more children than a typical class would have or do the numbers work perfectly? Tell me they work perfectly.
Well, numbers never work perfectly. Sorry, Justin. But we're, we're going through that process now. We're, we're doing whatever we, you know, as much as possible to try to balance those numbers. What I envision at this point in time without having all the materials in front of me, just doing some rough calculations is I would imagine that, you know, grade one and two, three, four, possibly five, two teachers assigned to remote learning unless we, one of those, those grades were able to do or have one teacher, but I'm envisioning two at this time for each grade. But I'm envisioning two at this time for each grade.
Yeah, it was more of a classroom size than it was a teacher question, but.
Right.
I, I'm in for uh, Russell Street.
Yep.
Um, cause I spent all day doing my lists and then I, I was going to say it did almost work out almost perfectly.
Thank you.
So um, in fourth, in third grade and fifth grade, the numbers work out right around twenty-two per class. Um, I was a little bit nervous because the fourth grade, um, the fourth grade remote only numbers were a little bit smaller. Um, however, I was able to make a two class, a class of seventeen, a class of eighteen for the remote and the regular classroom size is twenty-one. So I didn't feel like that was outrageously different. Um, and we may have a little bit of wiggle room. Um, and you know, we might have somebody drop out or, or you know, go back. Um, so I felt like I was able to really balance them nicely, the A through K and L through Z. I tried to balance that too. And so I was a little bit uh, blurry vision by the end of it, but it did work out pretty well in the Russell Street numbers.
Great. Um, similar, I, so to Brad's question, you know, or the fact that he's fielding questions related to his. I, I obviously, I have a um, a preschool student, so I'm receiving some preschool inquiries uh, from friends. Is there a, is there a preschool remote only option? I didn't think that there was. Michelle?
So Lynn and I are going to talk a little bit more about that. Um, we do have five students that have chosen remote learning and we've confirmed with them. Um, there are a couple of configurations that we are discussing. I just want to go over the, the way it's going to be delivered. So yes, there will be that option. Um, just the delivery of it still needs to be discussed and confirmed with our director of people personnel.
Excellent. Thank you.
And if I can weigh in a little bit, um, I think the planning is just a little bit delayed because we weren't anticipating that there was going to be um, a, a, a request or a need for um, for full remote for, for preschool. Um, but given that the need exists, we um, just need a little bit of time to pull that together.
Great.
Um, if I could add too, I think for people, you know, parents want to know who, who their child's teacher is. Um, and I, we are all doing our very best to get those lists together. I think um, uh, if I'm being very optimistic for Russell Street, um, if I have the draft um, class list together, I want grade level teachers to look at them on Tuesday. And then all the information has to get entered into Aspen and then we have to um, open the Aspen portal for parents to look at it. Optimistically, I'm shooting for next Friday for that. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for Michelle or anyone else. But that, that's optimistic to have it out by next Friday for parents. We're going to work hard to get it done by then. Um, but that, I think it is going to take that long to, to get all the parts figured out.
Any other comments or input? Yeah, Brad?
So is it my understanding um, that students can no longer move from the remote list to the hybrid list or we don't, ideally they don't, but they could still go from hybrid to remote. So in this, that case, I think Cheryl, your, your situation where we still have a couple of seats in the remote classrooms, we can accommodate if there's some melt or some different decisions, we can still accommodate that. Um, those numbers are, are actually pretty good, Justin. Well done.
And, and two, there's always the option if someone's in hybrid and they choose to go fully remote to stay in that same cohort as well. You know what I mean? And just be remote on all four days.
The, the only caution I offer is, is we're certainly not uh, encouraging switching uh, teachers for students uh, after a certain part of the year has gone by. So uh, we all know that consistency, especially in elementary school with, with teachers is very important. So that would be one consideration that, that uh, we would entertain if we had a request.
All right. All right. Good. Thank you. Um, Steve Mark wanted to talk a little bit about busing, the busing fees and busing registration.
Sorry. Um, yes, thank you. So um, so let me talk about bus fees first. I'm looking for uh, guidance and direction from school committee as far as what uh, the wishes are as far as bus fees go. Um, so normally bus fees, we charge two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student with a family cap of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, where do you want to go? Uh, you know, my, I guess my recommendation, I, I, I guess would be uh, we prorate those uh, bus fees uh, since, since kids are riding the bus two days a week. Um, we charge two fifths of what that bus fee normally would be. That would be ninety dollars a student. Um, I, I, I guess that's really where the conversation needs to go and I need some guidance on that. Um, before you segue into that conversation, let me just talk about bus registrations as well. Um, so we opened up regular bus registration as we normally do every year. Uh, we opened that up at the end of May. Um, we ran that through, actually we left that open all summer. So we did get some parents that registered to ride the bus this year. Uh, many of those parents deferred the payment until uh, the fall. Uh, some parents paid um, the, you know, the full two twenty-five. Um, we will be um, opening up a new bus registration form and, and the reason for this is we need to know exactly which students plan to and need to ride the bus. And that's going to be a registration process that's going to have to be for both those families that need to pay the bus fee, but also those families that don't normally pay a bus fee because of the mileage to the school. Um, those parents, even if they don't have to pay the bus fee, are going to have to go online, fill out the form. It's, 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 it takes less than two minutes to fill it out. It's uh, basic information, the name of the student and what, what uh, grade they're in. Um, but we're going to need all parents, if they want their students to ride the bus, to fill out that registration form. And then for those parents that do need to pay the fee, uh, there's information on the registration form where they can go and make those payments. Um, that, that registration process will be open uh, by Friday at noon. Uh, we need tomorrow morning based on where uh, school committee directions go tonight as far as the fee. We need some time in the morning to adjust the online uh, fee schedules uh, from the Unibank or online payment center and also update the paperwork that gets uh, modified online. So everybody has that information. So that's where we're at with bus registration. Uh, and then once all of those students are registered for the bus, uh, we also are waiting for those student cohort schedules, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday lists. Because once those lists are, are out and available, we need to then take those lists and develop uh, really very specific bus routes for those students that are riding, riding the bus. And we need to do that on Monday, Tuesday schedules and then Thursday, Friday schedules. And so um, I'm going to ask all the parents, you have to be patient with us. If we don't get those cohorts, uh, as Cheryl tests, as Miss, uh, Mrs. Temple said, until next Friday. Um, that leaves us very little time to develop those routes. And so uh, we will work on it as fast as possible. Um, but the bus routes may not be available until late the week after next week. So you know, a couple of days before school um, is when the bus routes might be available and, and I would do a robocall and let everybody know when those routes developed and available online. I apologize. It's, it's such a tight time schedule, but we're working as fast as we can. So that's a, 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 a quick update of where we're at with bus registration. Again, uh, I think we do need to have that conversation about uh, the appropriate fee that we should charge. Um, and that's what I'll say for now.
School committee members thoughts on what we think is the right direction to take regarding um, bus fees?
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead, Matt. Matt, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I think two fifths would be appropriate. That's what I had and it just makes the most sense if it works out to ninety dollars and prorate it and if we end up going into a, having to miss days and possibly look at reimbursing. Um, if we go into a full remote, but I'm good with the two fifths.
Hmm. Justin?
I, kind of a question to base the discussion. I'm assuming that we charge two twenty-five because historically we off, we figured that number was break even?
No. No, no. Go, Mike, go ahead. So the bus fees do not subsidize the entire transportation budget, never were designed to. Um, as a matter of fact, the percentage that it does subsidize drops contract by contract because we've never raised the bus fee since we initially put them in, which was early in my tenure, which means that it was a long time ago, um, relatively speaking. Um, so uh, Steve, remind me, we talked briefly about this today. Do we know roughly what? If we were, if we had full ridership, like a normal school year, which we don't anticipate is going to be the case this year, and we charge the two twenty-five with a six seventy-five cap, how much dollars is that? What rough percentage is that of the overall? Yeah. So, so, so typically uh, we collect in transportation fees uh, uh, right around a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That varies up and down. That is less than twenty percent of what the total busing contract cost is. The total busing contract uh, for this year is approximately five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So uh, you can see it, it's not really, you know, it, it's, it's, it doesn't cover the whole amount. Um, uh, again, you know, there's the, there's the, yeah, okay, that's, that's.
That, that's helpful. I, is the busing company going to charge us less because we're going to have less riders?
Uh, no, because they're still, you know, they're still doing eight bus runs a day.
I get, yep, it was, yep, I totally get that. Um, and we're going to have significantly less enrollment. So the, the gap's going to get, essentially I'm in favor of keeping it at two twenty-five with a cap of se- uh, six seventy-five per family because where we already have a significant gap in the cost versus then the money coming in, we're going to have less families taking the bus this year. Uh, so that the, it's only going to get greater. Um, so I, I mean, we're providing a busing service. I, I don't think two twenty-five for a hundred and seventy trips to and from school is outrageous if families opt to take the bus. A hundred and seventy days of school.
Right.
One, one each way.
Right. I think, yeah, I think we need to make the distinction that no student is going to ride all a hundred and seventy days.
No, of, of course not. It's like you're buying the, an annual pass.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Tim and Brad, thoughts about that?
Yeah. If we're um, you know, this is where having a, a greater fluency with the overall budget would be helpful for me. I assume taking in more revenue is better and taking in less revenue. The banker, I'll defer to the banker on that. Um, but I, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Matt that, you know, if these are, if, if what you're paying for are actual rides or access to busing and you're doing that forty percent of the usual time. And if we're assuming that the cost paid is, is a mere offset of the total cost anyway, then I think the forty percent is, seems appropriate. One thing I would point out though, just while I've got the mic is to kind of Steve's point about setting the um, the schedules. My assumption is that there will be some students who do go four or five days a week um, because of IEPs or other needs, which will only complicate, and I don't know if those have been identified yet. But that might complicate the, the bus routes. Um, so it won't be a simple cohort model, you know, cohort one, cohort two. But I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the forty percent.
Me too.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll just say real quickly that I, I, I support the, the, the reduction um, for a couple of reasons. Uh, when we, we put the bus fee in, we did it reluctantly and we, we have in difficult budget times, we've put on the table raising bus fees or athletic fees. And we've always said no, and it was a very short discussion. Um, previous school committees have felt very strongly that you know, public education should be public education and providing transportation is whether, you know, we may philosophically agree or not is mandated, legislated. Um, you know, we got to remember that we're only charging fees to students that live less than two miles away. It, what is it, Steve? Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Keep going. Yeah, you had. Less than two miles away in seventh grade and higher? Sixth grade and, seventh grade and higher? Yeah, K through six, less than two miles, seven through twelve, anybody rides a bus pays the fee. Okay, right. Okay, that's right. So seven through twelve, we don't have to provide, we're not obligated to provide it. So we charge fees for that entire population, but K through six, if you live outside of two miles, we can't charge and we don't, but inside you do. And the goal was never to really try to ask the people that are paying to subsidize other riders. It was really to, to try to defer the cost and um, you know, not offer universally where we're not required to. But once we, we are required to, and I don't know, I'm rambling a little bit, but we really tried not to raise the fee. So in that, in that spirit of, of, that's been set over the years, I'm going to say that I agree with the four fifths. I will have one comment. Um, Steve and I talked about this for a little bit today. We do feel it's important that we charge the fee upfront, knowing full well that we may not be running the buses for all a hundred and seventy days. Circumstances may dictate that we uh, need to take a break from that. And if that happens, we'll have a discussion about refunds, similar to the one we had uh, at the end of the, the, the last school year. But we really feel it's important that we charge it because we'd, we'd, we'd rather be in the refunding business, which is not easy, but it, it will do it if it's necessary and warranted. We really don't want to be in the business of, of being a bill collector where we're chasing people down uh, because they used the service, didn't have to pay for it upfront and then are just deciding that they don't need to pay for it at all because they already got the service and we don't have any leverage over them anymore. Um, that's not a good business for us to be in. We, we always try to avoid that. So I think it's important that we collect it upfront. Um, I also would like to reiterate for people that are listening uh, that Steve said that everybody needs to register for the bus. You need to explicitly tell us you're riding the bus. If you don't, we will take it on as an assumption that you are not riding the bus. And because of the timeframe we're dealing with and because of the constraints we're dealing with, it's going to be difficult for us to accommodate people who then say, I didn't understand that you, that I needed to tell you ahead of time. Um, so I don't like to have to be that way, but it's going to be very impactful on a lot of people if we don't get. And I'm not talking about the administration. I'm talking about making sure we get these bus runs set right to efficiently get the kids that do want to ride the bus to school on time and we can't be tweaking it after the fact. So I hope everybody hears that loud and clear. We'll make sure that we get that out there uh, and reinforce that messaging over the registration period. Brad, you got your hand up?
I do. It's a question for Steve. Steve, I understand that the, our bus contract, um, their costs are not going to go down because they're running the same number of runs even with lower ridership. I wonder if their costs are going to go up and if they'll pass some of those along to us if they have increased us, because I assume they will, have increased kind of cleaning um, expenses. Are we, is there a chance our contract will be inflated in the next couple of months?
Uh, uh, to be honest, there's a small chance, but I think that's pretty small. Um, I've had conversations with uh, the bus company uh, about that very conversation. Um, because uh, if, if we're realistic about it, they're going to run buses Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for the, for the most of it. And then Wednesday, they may have to run uh, some buses to pick up some students. And so, so they're going to be able to offset some of that cost by some of the savings from that, from that Wednesday day. So we've had the conversations. Um, w- we haven't formalized anything, but we've certainly had those conversations. And I think um, I, I think we're going to be okay with that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I, I would also like to reiterate uh, what Mike said, everybody needs to register. But also parents need to understand that this is, in the past, we've offered a lot of flexibility between where we drop kids off and, and changing, you know, going home with friends and stuff. We're not going to be able to offer that this year. So it's, it's home to school, school to home or it, you know, it does, it, it's, it's one stop, pickup, one stop, drop off. It has to be consistent all the time because developing these routes uh, with that kind of, that kind of variability and days and drop offs, if they want different days at different places, that's impossible to do. So it's going to have to be one stop, pickup, same drop, same stop, drop off. Um, you know, as we get started. Um, you know, later in the year, we can reassess it if things get easier and, and uh, the regulations loosen up or whatever, we might be able to, to offer some flexibility. But right now that's, those are kind of the guidelines that we have to operate under. Thank you. Um, real quick, I, I see a couple of hands up and I'm going to let those people uh, have input. But before we do, one thing we didn't explicitly talk about was I think we have consensus and I'll entertain a motion in a moment uh, about lowering the fee, but how about the cap? Do we want to lower the cap, eliminate the cap on if we're already dropping the fee? Um, thoughts about that? Tim? So, so let me just update. The normal family cap uh, is three times the normal rate. So it's.
So it's three students, so six seventy-five. Uh, if we drop the rate to ninety dollars a student, that family cap would drop down to two hundred and seventy dollars a family. Just so everybody has the numbers.
Alright, thank you.
Mike, I just wanted to mention that we are going to have an extra run uh four days a week with uh our kindergarten since we're having half-day kindergarten.
Okay, yep, that's good to keep in mind. Alright, Timon, do you have a comment about the the cap?
No, Steve answered it. I was asked, I forgot how many kids.
Okay. Thoughts about the cap relative to the bus fee?
Just keep the same formula, three times sounds sounds adequate. The expla- the further explanation on the the radius requiring busing and the fee structure helps. Like my concern is that I think we're almost getting down to a point where do we just give busing away for free? We're going to collect so little.
I you you I I understand that, I do. Yeah, feel free to make a motion, we'll see what the appetite is.
I am on the budget committee.
Yeah, exactly. Um, alright, so I I think then we see the consensus there. Uh, before I entertain a motion, I do, I see one hand up now. So uh Dorothy, if we want to recognize any public input relative to to this discussion?
Sure. April Coulson, please say your name, your street and your question.
April Coulson, Spectacle Bond Road. I'm just curious if we regis- if we're trying to avoid the bus, but our kids once in a while might need to take the bus. Is it recommended that we go ahead and register them?
No, it's re- it's recommended that you do not register them because we're not sure we're going to be able to accommodate that. The buses, just remind everybody, the buses are limited to twenty-eight students per bus. Um, that's per DOE guidelines, that's for border health guidelines and recommendations. And so it's basically one student per seat. And um, we feel based on the numbers from the surveys uh about those parents that want to ride those buses, uh we're going to be maxing out some of those buses at those numbers. And so I I I think it's fair to say that um if your student needs, might need the bus occasionally. Uh, I think it's fair to say that I I I think it would be fair to leave that seat open for a student that that depends on that transportation on a daily basis.
I appreciate the question, April, and it it that's a tough call because as Steve talked about earlier, we really try to be accommodating and 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 I know we are accommodating. We help families out as much as we can. I will, I will say personally that I will leave that to each family to decide what the right decision is for them. Um, we're not going to police necessarily how many days you're riding the bus, even though you sort of intimated to us that you were going to be a full-time rider. That's, we don't want to be in that business either. Um, we would ask that everyone try to make the right decision based on the circumstances that we're all struggling to deal with. But if at the end of the day, you think you need some ridership, that that's your call as a family.
A- and let me follow, I mean, I what I can, what I can do is after we get the bus numbers and the the actual bus ridership and the registration, create the routes. You know, if there are, if there are some routes that have some seats available. I can certainly come back uh to school committee and report that. And then um, you know, if there are, if there are families that need that occasional uh bus run, we can certainly try to make that accommodation at that time.
Okay, I do have one follow-up question. Um, students have the, will have the opportunity to move from remote to hybrid at some point. So are you going to reopen up the bus registration for those families that move from remote to hybrid?
Uh, we we really haven't had those conversations. That would possibly mean um rerouting every bus route to try to accommodate that. So um, again, you know, based on what the actual ridership is and the makeup of those bus runs. If a student moves from uh remote to hybrid and there's room on a bus that services that area. Then we would certainly make that accommodation. If that bus is full, then I I can only fit twenty-eight kids on a bus, so.
But but let me, let me jump in there, April, another great question, thank you. Um, I think that we owe it to the community that if we're going to reevaluate, let families reevaluate how they want their student to attend during the year. Then we also owe it to them to at least try to provide all the services associated with going to school in person. We can't promise it, um but if it's a, if it's a requirement and we definitely get to like some type of critical mass where all of a sudden we have a, you know, a significant increase in the number of families that want to participate in in-person instruction. I think we owe it to the community to at least try. And if that requires either rejiggering the lines to see if it fits the capacity we have or adding capacity. We would certainly make every effort to to try to get that to work. It might, the timing might be difficult. There might be a transition where families are going to have to try to get there on their own until we can make it work. But as the school year unfolds, we'll we'll be keeping an eye on that and see what we can do.
Yeah, and I agree, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy C., your name, your street and your question, please?
Uh, yes, I actually do school choice, so I am, um, my name is Cindy. Um, if I could actually ask a question back to um the percentages that I believe it was Ms. Steele gave earlier around the um the percentages of kids staying home. It was mentioned that sixth grade would not um have full-time remote teachers unlike K through fifth. But my understanding from the last board meeting last week was that sixth grade was um able to have remote dedicated teachers because um kids were not switching around. Could you just clarify um, you know, my understanding, which is which?
Cindy, can I just ask before we answer that question? Um, can you just give us your last name and and if you don't live in Littleton, your 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 community?
Of course, uh Cindy Catigan and from Shirley.
Alright, thank you Cindy, that's just for our public record.
Sure.
Um, Beth, do you want to address that or 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 Jason? I know, I think what I heard in all previous meetings was that we were going to evaluate the possibility of doing it at sixth grade, but we couldn't guarantee it as as easily as we could with the the elementary grades. And I guess now we we've kind of made our determination.
Yeah, exactly. I'm actually going to toss it over to Jason to speak specifically about the schedule.
Sure, yeah, we had kept an open mind about the possibility of adding that teacher. Kelly um Clenchy was very accommodating in that, that if we needed to have that in order to make things function, we would certainly, we would certainly look at that. As the numbers came in, it's hard without getting too deep into it, but there's a window in which that extra teacher would be the most effective route to go. If the numbers were too too few in one direction or too great in another. We'd really be adding a teacher to no, to no real effect. And 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 in the sixth grade, because we've had so many choose the the full remote option. What we would end up with is a handful of kids, um whether it's twenty, thirty, however many we choose, who would have that full remote teacher. Then you have to ask yourself, how do we decide who gets the full remote teacher and who doesn't? Right, and now we're pitting families against each other. The other part, too, is that for families who may decide that they want to go from remote to hybrid. One of the things that we would be doing is we'd be asking um kids to leave one teacher and then go to another midterm, mid-year. And we're just not really sure that, I'm not really sure that that's going to be an effective practice. If you've developed a relationship with a teacher, you've worked on a certain kind of curriculum with a teacher. And assuming that all the teachers were perfectly aligned in their daily planning when that switch did happen. You know, even then, it would be like, it would be like coming into a new school at a new time. And so really, as we, as I sat down to look at the numbers and really evaluate, would the and adding a single remote teacher really benefit our students? I couldn't come to in any uh one of the the scenarios that I created, a a yes to that. I I know that there are some families that would love to see that, but the the reality of it is it wouldn't be a great benefit to the student, it wouldn't be a great benefit to the class. It wouldn't draw the numbers down in any way, shape or form. And what it would do is it would recreate a a division within our families and our students about who got that person and who didn't. And that's just, I, looking at the scheduling that we currently have in front of us, there would be no way to do that fairly. It would have to be completely arbitrary and then dealing with um the the fallout from that. And so for all those reasons, we elected to stay with the current sixth grade model as it is. It's the most effective, it's the most egalitarian, and I think it will provide the best educational opportunity for our students.
Gotcha, thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up, Mike, to that question? So Jason, you're you're talking about one, we could, you know, one remote teacher wouldn't work. And if I jotted the numbers down correctly, I have forty-four percent of sixth graders um choosing full remote. So it seems like it'd be two, two and a half-ish. This is where maybe a situation where um the numbers don't align perfectly, but it would always, almost always have to be more than one, right?
You could, we could, in in theory, if you said we're going to add a second one. We can create a lot of things, like the schedule that that we've created is very flexible, but it gets back to the 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 position that we were in before. What happens if, dot, 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 right? If the numbers change, now all of a sudden I have a teacher with no students. Or I have, you know, two teachers who are overwhelmed, in which case, then, you know, it's it's the unknown. If we had a path, and I'm not suggesting this by any stretch, but if we had a path where students, where parents committed to remote learning for the year, then we could talk about how to do that effectively. But without that, I just, I I would hate to enter into a situation where we are bringing staff in only to find out that it wasn't the best choice for our students.
Is, given that then the percentages, at least in my world, seem so high at forty-four percent. Is it worth um a follow-up survey then for the sixth graders to see those parents that are willing to commit to the full year if it meant having that dedicated teacher? For instance, I would be interested in doing that um because my son has um some learning difficulties, not to the point where he's on an I E P. But I have concerns of having it him in that streaming model.
Now, Cindy, it's a, it's a, it's a fair question and 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 I totally get where you're coming from. I think one of the problems that we're dealing with, which has been why we've been meeting all summer, is the uncertainty of the future. Um, I would hate for us to put our our students, our staff, um our district in a position of of asking parents to adhere to something that in March or May, that may not really be applicable to what we're feeling currently at the at the end of August. And and I get the anxiety that that parents are feeling around this. But I think just not knowing what's ahead of us, I'm not sure that that bringing in the extra teacher would be the most effective plan for us at this point.
Gotcha. Could I fall um do one more follow-up question? And Tom, I've never participated in this forum before, so I don't know if I'm.
No, no, go ahead, you're fine.
I was listening to um the committee meeting on L C T V last night and had a follow-up question. Um, oh gosh, I'm blanking, oh god, maybe I'll have to um.
You can come back if you want.
No, remember, you had a beautiful presentation of modeling um what the experience would be like. And I think someone mentioned, well, this is a great thing for you guys to have done. Um, but, you know, you guys aren't kids. You know, you, this is not a real um true simulation unless you get kids that are age-appropriate in those classrooms. Is there any follow or has there been any follow-up conversation about that comment or that feedback of, okay, now that we see that it has worked with the school committee members and um some administration, now let's take it to the next stage of getting um our kids or some kids in there to see how the simulation would work?
I'm going to ask Beth or Kelly or both to reply to how they think the best way to proceed to sort of introduce this and and field test it. But I will say before that, that I think we all need to acknowledge that it it's a great idea. And even having said that, we might not have enough time to pull it off. And with a with a longer planning window, I think it would be more obvious that that would be a great idea and 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 understand why we we wouldn't do it. But they may have something to say about that from their perspective.
So I would say um I a hundred percent agree with um what Chairman Fontenella just said, that given more time, we might be able to make um that, you know, work a little bit better. Um, because we do have teachers coming in next week, starting next week on Tuesday. So um we can certainly, and something that the principals and building leadership team has been, have been discussing is actually creating a video um in order to be able for parents to see how it would look um and students to see how it would look coming into school um and kind of modeling it that way. Great. Um, my only, uh, my one comment upon reflection on seeing that video last week was that um I can see a lot of benefit of having kids be able to see um live kids, see kids on the screen. I would point out that not kid, not all kids are very comfortable with that idea of being on display, if you will. Um, for kids in the classroom. I'm not expecting reactions, but just to put that out there, that um I would not like to be on a big screen for live um participants to just be seeing me stare into a screen um for those fifteen, twenty-minute blocks.
Cindy, you shouldn't run for school committee then, I'm just saying.
I I will never run, and that's why my camera now.
You seem smart.
Thank you, Cindy, we appreciate that, uh, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Eileen, your name, your street and your question, please?
myself, Eileen Wiedegartner, Maplehurst Road. So I just want to go back and revisit the bus scenario for a moment. Would it be helpful to the school uh to know if parents that are remote but will need buses? If they go hybrid in the fall, let them know now? Like, is it?
He's thinking, yeah, no, we, I think we under- we understand the the question. I think Steve's trying to figure out his own mind how that.
Yeah, to look, to be honest, I think we're going to have our hands full just developing ro- routes based off of their current cohorts, Tues- Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in the short timeframe that we have, so um.
Right, but wouldn't it seem a little more forward-thinking if you had some of that information now? So come November, if that, if it looked like people were going to go full remote, then you wouldn't have to have that transition time? Because buses are mandatory for kids under over two miles up to grade six, are they not?
Yeah, and and that, we will accommodate that. I think that the way we want to deal with it is to get past the school opening, see where the capacity is and where there might be some extra capacity. And if we know that there is no extra capacity overall or on certain runs. Then then that will allow us to start to work with the bus company and say, what are you guys able to do for us if as we go forward, we start to get more ridership? Um, so it's definitely something that we're going to uh already know that we have to keep an eye on and and plan. It's not going to be crossing a finish line and then everybody that didn't come on the bus that first day will never get onto the bus. And your point about the these populations that we are required to bus is absolutely valid. And will, you know, if it comes down to it, and we have transitions of our populations and cohorts that will get dealt with. And again, if that means bringing more buses on and increasing the amount that we pay, then that's just how it's going to go.
Okay, uh, so if we're staying remote, then we'll wait till December to reevaluate that you wouldn't ask for it beforehand?
Correct, at this point in time, that's a great idea, but yeah, I think, I think that's the best course of action.
Okay.
Thank you, good question, though, good comment.
Whatever.
No more questions, Chairman Fontenella? Oh, wait, one more, Zoom webinar? Could you please state your name, your street and your question, please?
Yep, sorry, it's actually Erin Rainwater Mohawk Trail, that's my account through work, I can't change it for whatever reason. Um, I wanted to revisit the remote hybrid numbers. My son's going into transition. And I know the teacher retired, so I'm just wondering if Michelle or anybody could chime in on what the plan might be for that?
So we currently have two students who have chosen the transitional model. Um, I still have to talk that out with the staff, um so we're going to have those conversations early next week.
Okay.
Ideally, um, you know, to have a transitional teacher do that with the student because it is such a low number. That would be practical, but we also have to hire a new teacher. So in an ideal wor- world, if we had the teacher in place, that might be doable right off the bat. But we might have to get creative and see if those children can be absorbed into another full remote learning classroom.
So Michelle, do you think you might ask the two of us to decide between repeating kindergarten and moving on to first? We just want to get.
Actually, can I, can I interrupt, please? I I, Erin, I think it would be more appropriate for you to take this one offline and deal directly with the administration just because it's it's a particular circumstance for for your, for your family. That'll be, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Erin Rainwater, your street, your question, please?
She's the one that just stopped talking.
Yeah, we got her.
Thank you. She changed it, okay. No more questions.
Alright, then I would like to finish up with this. Uh, I I would like to take this as a motion and vote relative to the busing fees.
Mike, I'll move that we set our busing fees for ninety dollars um per child with a cap of two seventy per family for this school year.
Seconded.
Motion made a seconded, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go. Hearing none, I'll go into a roll call vote. Timlin?
Timlin Rossius, yes.
Brad?
Brad Austin, yes.
Matt?
Matt Hunt, yes.
Justin?
Justin McCarthy, yes.
And Mike Fontenella says yes as well. All right, thank you.
And and Mike, just one more reminder, if I may please. The the registration process for the busing will be open Friday, tomorrow, after afternoon. So after twelve o'clock in the morning, that registration will be available online and people can go in and fill it fill it out. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Steve. All right, uh, we're gonna have two presentations. The first is uh, the Public Health Metrics Update. We downloaded new data yesterday. Um, so I want to bring that presentation up. And as we preface that and get that on screen, I would like to say thank you to Katrina Wilcox Hagberg. She uh, looked at our models. We I sent them along to her. She had some great suggestions. Uh, only really one of which I got a chance to incorporate into today, this week's update, but others that were still evaluating and figuring out the best way to do with it. So thank you to Katrina. Um, looking at this, this is again, just I'm going to go through this a little quicker today. This is will be available in the packet and we're working towards getting this online. We're also going to uh, start adding, next week will be the fourth week. So we're gonna try to think about how to present some trend data um, and add to that. But um, so this is Littleton and the contiguous communities. If we just go to the next slide, we'll see the numbers for these communities. You can see that Littleton has had uh, zero cases. And this is, this is one change that we made. We were, we were reporting on positive tests and how many average positive tests per day. Because the way the data is downloaded, if you, if a community has between zero and five, they often just say less than five, which isn't helpful in terms of trying to do math and statistics. And I don't know quite why they do that. But Katrina suggested that what we do is actually just look back two weeks in that those cases and and extrapolate the number from the total cases to date versus total cases two weeks ago. So this is total cases reported in these communities the last fourteen days. Uh, and then the average cases per day. Uh, Littleton is at zero. See, Acton's higher. Uh, and then communities are at, you know, between five and zero. The goal here is to remain at five cases per one hundred thousand residents. And you can see in the column there, Littleton, our goal is to remain in uh, five cases, less than point five one cases per day. Right now, we're at a hundred percent below that level. And as a uh, small geographical grouping, we're about seventy percent below the level. The next metric is test positive percent positivity of tests. The goal is to be at three or less. Littleton, we had no uh, positive tests over the last fourteen days. Uh, and as a small geographical area, we're at point five three, which is significantly below the three percent level that that we're looking at. Um, at this point, I just want to skip to the last slide. Uh, whoever is flipping for me. Um, and then this is uh, you know, we have our different geographical. So you see Littleton, our contiguous communities, that's what we took a look at on the first slide. We add in the next belt of contiguous communities. Uh, you can see that the uh, goal is to be at ten point eight six cases or less per day. Um, it's at three point one four. The percent positivity is point five one. If we expand out to that Route four ninety five belt we've been reviewing, we're uh, fifty five percent below the total cases per day that we would like to be at. And we're at point eight five percent of percent positivity. Middlesex County is about forty percent below the average cases per day that that we feel comfortable with. And they're at a point nine three percent positivity. And the 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 whole state is twenty percent below that uh, five cases per one hundred thousand per day. And at one point three uh, of a three percent threshold. So the numbers are holding. Uh, these are very similar to what we've seen the last few weeks. Uh, I think it'll be more meaningful to see the trend, which I know people are curious about. Right now, the trend is is good. It's level to to falling for for most of of the communities and around us and and but we'll be able to take a a better look at that. Uh, hopefully next week. Um, I can set them the trend models up and then just get the new data on Wednesday. Um, any questions or thoughts about about this? Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, just I want to make sure I'm seeing this correctly. So if the three percent positivity threshold is the standard that the most conservative organizations, CDC, WHO, or whoever has said, that's the under that threshold, you can consider going back. According, is it? This looks like we're at thirty percent, maybe thirty five percent, rough math of the of the most aggressive, most conservative threshold. Is that fair?
Uh, Littleton or the?
Little Littleton, it seems that we're at zero, right? But even depending how you do this grouping, you know, even if you accept the point eight five or the point nine, we're still at right twenty eight, thirty percent of the of the threshold that would still be acceptable.
That is correct.
According to the the public health experts.
Correct. If you choose three percentage of threshold, your math is spot on.
And that, well, that's surprising. I'll be quiet now then.
All right, any other comments or questions on that? All right, thank you. Um, that did not get in the packet because we did it today, but it'll get put in the packet that goes online. And then, uh, as I said, we are working on getting that like as a as a series of webpages on the website that we can update and have people uh, have access to uh, as we move forward. All right, I I do see a hand up if we want to grab public input.
William Skinnis, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, uh, my name is Bill Muskinis. I'm a teacher at Littleton High School. Um, I'm the president of the LEA as well. And um, I'd like to pose a question relative to the cost. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Could I get your um, address and your town, please?
Oh, uh, sure, Raymond Avenue in Shrewsbury.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I'd like to pose a a question relative to some of the costs of the hybrid model, which in some ways relates to a question that was posed earlier in the meeting. Um, so uh, is my understanding that between thirty and forty educators uh, may not be returning to the Littleton Public Schools this year, either permanently or temporarily? Um, largely due to the decision to choose the the hybrid model? Um, this number includes those who have retired early or resigned because of health concerns around returning to in person instruction, those who need to take FMLA leave for medical childcare caregiver reasons, and those who have taken unpaid leave because they felt they had few other choices or denied the accommodation to teach remotely. Um, so what all these people have in common is that they can't teach Littleton students this year, or at least for much in some cases. And it goes without saying, but I think it's worth stating that we as educators believe that the loss of so much collective skill and institutional knowledge will negatively impact the student experience this year. Um, the question relates to this, though. I know it was it was stated at a prior school committee meeting that it was worth trying hybrid to begin the school year. So for the sake of argument, um, let's say that the district is losing thirty educators out of a round of around a hundred and forty, um, some permanently. Uh, do you believe that this cost justifies or makes the decision worthwhile to choose the hybrid model? And um, if possible, I would also respectfully request to hear from each uh, school committee member um, on this question. Um, thank you very much.
Yeah. Uh, Bill, that's actually so hypothetical at the moment that I don't think it really warrants a full response from each individual can uh, school committee member, and I'm gonna ask them to hold their comments back. We uh, the administration is working through uh, the requests for accommodation, the requests for leave, uh, the submissions of resignations. And that is a really unfolding process, so we don't have any real data on that. So trying to determine what the impact might be, I think, is entirely premature and preliminary. Your point that if that came to pass, that sort of level of impact, that would definitely be a factor that we would weigh as a school committee to determine if we think that we've uh, we think that this is still the right way to go. But it's an unfolding uh, situation. And we think that we need the time to evaluate that appropriately before we are able to measure the impact, both financially and in any other manner uh, before we can answer that. And I do see Superintendent Clenchey raising his hand, so go ahead, Dr. Clenchey.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Uh, Bill has been in contact with me and and we extended the deadline for teachers uh, to submit leave requests or accommodations. That deadline is tomorrow. Uh, as soon as I have that uh, final number, and I have had no other people submit tonight to date, uh, I'm not sure where Bill's getting that number from. Uh, I've had uh, two retirements uh, not uh, related to the hybrid model, uh, perhaps related to COVID nineteen. Uh, and I'm I'm, I don't have the total count now, but Dorothy and I were hosting meetings all afternoon. And my count is is around seventeen people that are requesting accommodations or leaves at this point in time. So certainly not near forty.
Uh, may I ask a follow up?
Sure.
Uh, I was just wondering, um, at this point, uh, have there been, would that number also include? Um, was there one or two resignations that also happened largely, uh, and I don't want to parse words here, but either because of the hybrid model or because of COVID?
Um, I'm gonna actually ask that if you, as the LEA president, Bill, have specific questions about how your membership is addressing uh, coming back to school relative to leaves and retirements, that you deal with it directly with the administration? Uh, as is your uh, right and expectation as the LEA president?
Oh, sure. Um, I would just hope that maybe at a later date, when maybe these numbers have been finalized, that we could return to this question, because I think it is a very valuable question to pose, given that the impact on students, losing teachers that have had quite a positive impact on them over the course of many years won't be here because of a decision made. Like, there's an opportunity cost made every decision. I think it's worth discussing that um, opportunity cost at a later date. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Nicole Coaches?
Hi, I'm Nicole Coaches at forty five Roxbury Drive. Um, as an alum, I would just like to echo what William Muskinis was saying about the impact of losing teachers. Um, and I would just like to make that known.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
No more questions? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Margaret Gillan, your name, your street? And your question, please?
Hi, my name is Margaret Gillan. Um, I I live at fifty eight Wedge Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. I am a high school teacher here in Littleton. And my question is, um, when you say that students have the choice to have remote classes, um, where are they? Where are they having their classes?
We don't really know. I guess our assumption would be most of them are going to be at home, but we know that there's planning uh, for some uh, third party providers to do day, I I don't know, daycare is the right term, but to provide a spot outside of the house for families that don't feel like they can leave their children or or can be home with their children during the day. Um, so it's possible that it's not at home, but we wouldn't really have any way of knowing that, nor nor would we really feel comfortable trying to assert certain that.
Sure, I guess.
Privacy issue.
Sorry, maybe my question wasn't clear enough. Um, so but I guess maybe the the bigger answer would be they're not at school when they're learning remotely?
Yes, that's 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 fairly fairly straightforward proposition, yes.
Um, so just a follow up question to that. With regards to teachers, when you say that if some teachers are looking for accommodations to teach remotely, that would mean that they would be teaching from home, correct?
Uh, so onsite versus offsite delivery of instruction, I guess, is the way we're thinking about it. Would a teacher be teaching onsite in the buildings or teaching offsite? Is something that we're working out and and is part of our negotiation with the LEA?
Right, so I guess I just need clarification on when the world uses that word remotely, if you think of anyone in the industry and when they talk about, oh, yeah, I work remotely, they're working from home. So when we say that our students are attending classes remotely, we are saying that they are attending classes from home via the computer. So if teachers are looking for accommodations to teach remotely, then we will say that teachers are working from home, correct?
Okay, okay. Uh, so it is possible that the level of accommodation that a teacher uh, asks for and and warrants, given their circumstances, it is possible that they would be uh, teaching offsite. There are also accommodations, levels of accommodation that can be made that would still allow for that uh, delivery of instruction by the teacher to be onsite. Um, so maybe they're in a classroom with with no live students, but they're still onsite. So is that maybe?
Yeah, I guess.
Does that help? Clear it up?
Thank you. Um, and I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, yep, thank you, Michael.
Jessica Cormier, your name, your street and your question, please?
My name is Jessica Cormier. I'm a teacher at Littleton Middle School. I live in Pepperell. Um, my question is about substitute teachers. Um, what is the plan for substitutes? I know that last year when there wasn't an issue with COVID, we had a shortage in the district finding substitutes. Um, sometimes other teachers were called on to cover classes. Um, do we have enough substitutes right now, ready to call on? And what is the plan for how the substitutes are going to cover classes and remote classes simultaneously? Thank you.
Dr. Clenchey or Beth Steele, you guys want to?
Uh, I can, I can answer that. Uh, I mean, every year we we recruit substitute teachers. Uh, this year is no different. We will uh, be asking our substitute teachers to come in during those ten days and receive training uh, with the hybrid model and and also become proficient with offering remote instruction. Uh, you have to, I'm sure you realize this, but uh, substitute teachers don't only work with for one district. They they work for a few. Uh, very rarely do we have one that that just works for Littleton Public Schools. We are also training our ed assistants. At times when when teachers are on leave or are out for a week or so, we we may offer that week period of time to to one of our educational assistants. So they will also be trained. Uh, it's no surprise to anybody in education that uh, substitute teachers the past five years have been harder to find. Uh, we've actually done a pretty good job uh, staffing our our classrooms when when teachers are away. Uh, sometimes we may have a disbalance because of uh, people that uh, fall victim to a cold or a flu and also multiple people going out on professional development days. Uh, we are looking at that process now. And I've asked our principals to map out leaves for every day. And if we find that we have too many teachers uh, that uh, have leaves preplanned and we also teachers uh, planning, planning to go out on professional development, that we maybe have them change their plans and reregister for another PD session on another day. So these are things that we're doing. Uh, again, we're like any other district. We're we're in competition for subs, but I'll repeat uh, what I said. I think we've done a pretty good job of of retaining subs. Uh, some of our subs uh, get gobbled up when teachers go on long term leave. And we put them in the classroom, then we have to hire other subs to to replenish our pool.
Yeah, you raise a good point, Jessica. The the and it's teaching resources, it could come down to busing resources as well. Uh, the the issues you're raising are not uh, specific to Littleton. Um, all of the districts are going to be competing for resources uh, as we all deal with this as best we can. And it may very well turn out to be a significant issue and have a, you know, outsized impact. Um, but we're gonna do the best we can, and we can only, you know, wait to see exactly how it unfolds to be able to understand what else we might need to be able to do beyond what we typically do. Um, but you, that's that's going to be true of every district uh, that opens school uh, in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hogan, your question, your street and your name, please?
I am Dan Hogan. Uh, I live at eleven forty six Hill Road in Boxborough. I'm a teacher at the high school. I teach physics and uh, computer science. Um, I was, I actually had a an accommodations meeting with Dr. Clenchey today. And.
Dan, can I kind of interrupt you for one second? Uh, before we go too far, if you're going to start uh, describing a particular circumstance relative to your employment.
No, I, I'm not.
Okay, just want to make sure, because it's
Yeah, no.
Confidentiality issues that we need to be cognizant of, but other than that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to, I just want to be heard.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I, I basically, uh, need to work remotely. That is, I need to teach remotely.
Dan, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you again. That needs to be dealt with directly with the administration. This is not a school, we, the school committee cannot.
Did I fit my, my, could I have, could I have?
Dan, I'm going to ask you, no. No, because I, 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 I asked initially that you not bring up your personal employment issues relative to the situation. We, we are not.
Okay, Mike, you are, Mike, you are obfuscating the issues like you did the last time we had a meeting, a school committee meeting. You're choosing to obfuscate and not let teachers have a voice.
I, and we, so we've had at least five teachers already speak tonight. We've had teachers speak at several other meetings.
Okay, so Mike, I, I am having to retire, okay? Despite the fact that I don't want to retire. There are many teachers.
Dan, I'm going to ask you to stop, please. I'm going to ask you to stop. This is an employment.
I think you should call, I think you should call.
Dorothy, can, can we mute that, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dan, but your specific situation relative to your employment is, is a, is specific to dealing with the administration, not the school committee. I'm sorry. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, we'll, we'll move on to the next person.
Kelly Hart? Your name, your street, and your question, please?
Hi, I'm Kelly Hart. Um, I live on Hibiscus Lane and Air. I'm a teacher um, at Shaker Lane School and I, this is just going back to substitutes. Um, and I, I know that we start school in a couple of days and I know, um, how difficult it has been over the last few years to secure substitutes in a regular school year. Um, I know that a lot of times classroom assistants are pulled to cover classes, but now that the technology um, changes are so, so big for this school year, um, I'm wondering if there is a solid plan in place for getting substitutes in next week to take, to take part in the technology training. And if there is not, is there a possibility that there will be building subs? Because I know that that was brought up in the past.
Dr. Clenchey, would you like to reiterate, um, the planning for the training for the substitute teachers that was mentioned a few minutes earlier?
We're, we're inviting our substitute teachers in next week to be specifically trained, uh, on the hybrid model, using the technology as well as, as, uh, the remote model. Uh, our ed assistants are also going to be trained, as I mentioned before, often our ed assistants, uh, because they're, uh, with us, uh, understand the philosophy of our system. Many of them have teaching degrees already, uh, are often moved into those positions when they do open during the school year. Uh, when we recruit new subs, we will be providing opportunities for them to be trained at all. Uh, I would love nothing more than to hire subs for a particular school, but we have, we have budget restraints and, and if, if I hire a substitute teacher, uh, per school and offer benefits, uh, we're looking at, uh, well, probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, again, as a, as somebody that's, uh, charged with the responsibility of making sure our budget balances, along with Steve Mark, the business manager, uh, we don't have that, that kind of money floating around at this point in time. So we're doing the best we can. Uh, we're looking for, for other ways, uh, creative ways to, to perhaps help. Uh, my hope is, is that, uh, we, we have a year, uh, another year where most of our teachers remain healthy and, uh, we're able to provide the, uh, the necessary substitute coverage, uh, so that, uh, everything goes as planned.
Yeah, I, I, I know that, that we all want the, the best and the smoothest course for our students. I, I want that more than anybody myself. Um, but I know that the substitute part, at least at, at Shaker Lane, I can't speak to any other school, i- is such an integral part of continuing hybrid learning and continuing, um, you know, to give the best to our students that I'm hoping we'll be able to bring those substitutes in next week.
Thank you, Kelly.
Pam Abate, your name, your street, and your question, please?
Hi, uh, Pam Abate, I live at two twenty-seven White Street in Belmont, Mass. And my question is, and I would like to open this up.
Pam, are you a teacher in, in Littleton?
I am, yeah.
I, I know you are, but thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got that.
The general question, it's not specific to my thing. Um, Mr. Fontanella, you said that there's accommodations meetings happening? And I participated in one. But at the beginning of the meeting, it was told to me, it explained to me that my request is not an option at the high school. So there's no remote options at the high school, maybe perhaps middle school. Uh, because if I'm remote at home because of my medical condition, that.
Pam, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you again. You're, we're getting into details, employee.
Not really.
How we are, you're, you're specifically talking about your meeting
Okay.
with the administration.
I'll cut off that then.
Or your, your.
Forget it, forget, forget me. There was no, there is no option to apply for it. None. Really?
Uh, Dr. Clenchey, could you give us a general rundown of, of the process for, uh?
I have an option or an alternative process I'm trying to present here.
Uh, first of all, I, I need to, to publicly disclose that, that personnel issues are, are not something that can be discussed in, in public session. So I have to, uh, support
That's fine.
Uh, in not allowing those discussions to occur. I can answer Chairman Fontanella's question specific to do we have remote positions in the high school, uh, or middle school? I've talked about that before on camera. Uh, due to the certification requirements in middle school and high school, we, we do not have the flexibility with the staff that we have to offer remote positions to staff. The only way we could do that is to reconfigure teaching assignments and have teachers teach out of their certification areas. And one has to ask themselves, is that the best way to offer instruction to students? I mean, having teachers, uh, teach courses that they haven't had a chance to, uh, prepare for, it's out of their cert area. Uh, to me, it just, it just doesn't make sense. I don't think it's fair to teachers either.
I would explore a committee on that, because I think it's possible. I have a, I have a business background. I've done operational studies. I have two master's degrees. I mean, I know how to present a situation where this could work, but I feel like it's not.
Pam, as a member of the association and a member of the negotiating team, I think you'd be well w- well within your rights to present that type of
I would love to.
Proposition to the administration or, or to the school committee through the negotiating process.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Duffy, state your name, your street, and your question, please?
Um, hi, uh, so I'm Jacqueline Duffy. I live at ninety North Street, Unit Two in Medford. And I am a Spanish teacher at the high school. Um, thank you for hosting tonight. I'm very happy to speak. Um, my question is related, I guess, to where I live. So Medford, for folks who know, it's, it's close to Boston. It's next to Somerville. It's a congested city. Um, and has in the past, um, been a red zone and particularly, you know, with, you know, it's a college/university town. It's it's next to Boston, multiple different, you know, MBTA services run through Medford, um, where I live. So I just want to know, um, are folks and the school committee and an admin, are they worried about teachers traveling from high-risk areas, bringing potentially, you know, all kinds of things into school? But, you know, referring to COVID, has there been any discussion on, I don't know, I mean, monitoring or, or just, you know, being, being mindful of, you know, where folks are traveling from to come into the buildings? Um, thank you. That's my question.
Yep. Uh, we haven't specifically considered tracking our, our individual instructors or school choice students who might be traveling from outside Littleton. We, the metrics that we're evaluating, uh, you know, ripple out from Littleton out towards four ninety-five and we report on Middlesex County. I think Medford is not Middlesex County, it might be Suffolk County.
It is Middlesex, yeah. So we are, we're in the far outer end, where it's a very big county.
Yeah, Middlesex is kind of a funky, uh, gerrymander type shape. But, uh, so we have the Middlesex County numbers and somebody asked me the other day via email if we had considered that, and I started to think about it. And I, I, and based on some of the, most of the towns that I've heard so far from the teachers that have spoken, they're all in one of those circles, including yourself, although I think you're the farthest out.
I am the farthest, so I can tell you.
Yeah, so, you know, those, those levels outside of Littleton are the immediate geographical area, the intermediate geographical area are sort of pretty much being evaluated. Um, you know, if we thought that, uh, we, we could definitely take a look at the employment data, you know, not the people, but, you know, anonymitize it and then look at the, uh, geog- geography and see if there's a significant portion of the staff that's not included in our current uh, geographical analysis. Um, so maybe that's worthwhile. Um, so we can definitely think about that.
Okay.
I mean, your, your question in general, is it a concern? In fact, yeah, it, it, it's definitely something that is a concern for all the districts as we get ready to try to reopen. Uh, seventy-five percent of the districts that I've seen on, on a mass association, a school committee list are trying, uh, a hybrid model, uh, very close or similar to what we're doing. So I think that's a concern that just in general, as we open up and you think about colleges opening up in, in Massachusetts, we're going to get to another level of, uh, of gathering and traveling and, and, and interacting that we haven't necessarily been at for a while. Um, and we're going to have to see what happens. The guidance that we're getting from the public health agencies and other, other sources indicate that they think that we're in a position to, to go ahead. Um, but that we're all looking at it with an eye towards what is going to unfold and if it, you know, depending on which way it goes, we might very well uh, be required to, uh, retrench.
Great, that was, that was thoughtful. Thank you, I appreciate that, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Fontanella, just, just something to add to that conversation. Uh, my understanding is if, if we have staff that, that live in red zones, uh, they have an opportunity for testing that, that we don't have in, in our community. So, uh, I would recommend, uh, staff that, that live in those areas take advantage of, of, of the testing that's available.
Okay. Brianna Fumia, your name, your street, and your question, please?
Hi, I'm Brianna Fumia. Um, I live in Westford. I'm a teacher at LMS. Um, I just, I actually have two things that I wanted to say. One thing that got brought up as I was listening. Um, I heard Dr. Clenchey mention about substitutes, uh, mentioning the assistants being trained to sub and cover classes. And I don't know about the other schools, but I know at LMS, um, the assistants are there to help the special education students and it would be really, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to cover classes. Um, so I just didn't know if there was like other assistants that were going to be hired or used for other things, but I know that the assistants that we have are used to help our students on IPs.
The, Jason, do you want to address that?
I can start. The, the ed assistants that I'm referring to are general ed assistants that we have in our school system, not ones that are specifically assigned to students.
Okay, I just, I don't think we have those at LMS. That's why I was a little confused. Um, my other question would be, I was hearing that we were, if you were, want us to be remote or for the remote days, teachers should be in the buildings. Um, is it still true that on Wednesdays there'll be a cleaning day after the cohorts and the teachers still have to be in the building as they're cleaning?
Uh, the Wednesdays are definitely a deep cleaning day and our goal is to minimize the student population in the building. Uh, we don't think that we can necessarily empty the building because we, there are students that require services that may require them to be uh, in person all five days, but we're still working that out. Uh, in terms of what that means for the staff being onsite or offsite, that is part of, uh, what we are negotiating with the LEA.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Rebecca Mon, your name, your street, and your question, please?
Hi, everybody. I'm Rebecca Mon. I actually live in Nashua, but I teach at Shaker Lane. Um, and I'm a reading specialist at Shaker Lane right now, but just to follow up with that previous comment, some of us are also from Nashua and from across the mass border, so just keep that in mind, but that's not why I'm, I'm calling in. Um, having been in the classroom this week a couple of times in Shaker Lane, I just wanted to share a thought or a couple of thoughts. And this may be both a short-term thing and maybe more of a long, long-term thing for Littleton to consider. Um, but, um, for eighteen years I had a room on the second floor of Shaker Lane and it does get extremely hot up there and going around the school this week wearing a mask on, it can get really tough to breathe and, you know, um, I guess, you know, I just want everybody, I know Shayna Garlicy called in last week and mentioned this as well. Um, you know, and it's been one thing for folks to say, you know, I hear it gets pretty hot up there, but it's different to actually be in it for six, six, seven, eight hours. And with the, you know, fact that those classrooms on that second floor get hotter than it is outside, you know, kids, we may be seeing kids with heat-type symptoms that mimic COVID symptoms and, you know, that's going to make it trickier for us and the nurse. I know, Dr. Clenchey, maybe you can speak to this a little bit, and I guess, you know, I'm just hoping for some reassurance. But we had talked about the possibility of going into air-conditioned spaces, but with social distancing, we only have the library, the tech room, really. That's really not going to be, you know, doable. You also, I guess, talked previously about heat days where you could call a heat day. And if it was extremely hot in the building, maybe in the eighties or nineties upstairs, kids and teachers could be remote. Um, sorry, but, I mean, I guess there never has been a heat day. So I just was feeling like uncertain that that would actually be used. Um, but, you know, everybody that's here, we're, you know, teachers and students, we're going to put our faith in you guys to, you know, keep our health and safety in mind. I think just the other piece of this is this is uh, maybe a highlight right now because of COVID and everybody has to wear masks and PPE. And it's very uncomfortable to be in the heat, but this will continue as it has for a long time to be a problem upstairs at Shaker Lane. So it might be something that we as a district need to look at long-term too. So I guess I'm kind of just hoping for like a little reassurance in the short term, since September still can be pretty hot. Um, and I'm just, that's all I want to say, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, the, the, uh, heat on the second floor at Shaker Lane is something that we've addressed a couple of times over the course of the summer as we did our planning and our, our decision-making. Uh, in terms of the heat days, that's not something that we had thought or really ever offered as a, a solution in prior years because it would require us, we didn't have the infrastructure in place. It would mean a lost day of school, which would have to be made up. Now, this year, because of the circumstances we're dealing with, we could just have a heat day or any other day where we needed to not be in the building and still count it as a day of instruction, assuming that, you know, we were able to have the students and staff executing on the, the remote delivery of instruction, which we fully expect to happen. So in terms of assurance, I would, I would ask you to believe that because now it is much more feasible and easy to do, the infrastructure's in place, that if we need to do it, we are going to do it. Uh, we are hoping that because we're starting, uh, instruction a couple of weeks later into September, uh, and then moving into October and November, that this might be an issue that's needs to be addressed more in, in the tail half of the year than in the front half of the year. The other thing I would say about the long-term planning is, uh, that it, that the reason it gets so hot up there is that the roof is too close to the classroom ceilings, but that building was built a while ago, like the sixties, I believe. And we are starting the process. It's going to be a multi-year process before we get to it, but I guess that's the definition of long-term. Uh, that we expect to rehab that building and that is definitely one of the primary, uh, things that we will get resolved. Um, along with, uh, you know, upgrading the air conditioning aspect of the HVAC system, which is what happened when we were able to do a renovation of Russell Street.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Mike G, state your name, your street and your question, please?
Yep, Mike Gertie, one forty-five Hartwell Ave. Yeah, so my question goes back to how we ask parents to choose hybrid and remote. Um, so we asked only parents of remote to choose that and to commit for a certain amount of time. Um, and I was wondering why we didn't, um, first have hybrid and remote commit for those months. Um, cause those numbers would, because I know people who said, I'm going hybrid to keep my options open. Um, so they may come into school for a couple of weeks and then decide, I'm gonna go remote. Um, and I'll just say that, you know, when it comes to schools, the greatest asset are the teachers. Um, that isn't to undermine what anyone's doing from an administrative perspective. But if we can get teachers who want to teach remote and if we could get better numbers on who's gonna be hybrid and remote by asking people to, uh, commit, then maybe we can accommodate these teachers so they don't retire, quit, or find other things to do.
Um, in terms of your first part of your, your question, the idea is, was that we're asking people to commit to the, to tell us that they want to have their child, uh, be a remote learner and commit to that for some period of time. Because integrating a remote student back into the building in the middle of some time period is much more problematic to us from a, a logistics perspective than going the other way. So we felt that, uh, that that was the right way to do it. We are hoping that you, you mentioned sort of that some families indicated to you or friends of yours that, well, I'm just gonna go remo- uh, a hybrid and in-person for the two days and if I don't like it, I'll bail. I mean, that certainly, we can manage that. We're hoping that nobody's going to take advantage of it and, and that they, they really would only opt back out in the middle of that time period because they really, something changed or they just didn't have enough information. It's just not working. That's fine. That's kind of why we went at it from that perspective. And then your comment about, um, you know, teachers and, and balancing the delivery of curriculum and the health and safety of our staff to, you know, everything else that we're trying to get done is, is, is taken. Thank you.
Thanks.
Crystal Dionne, state your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, Crystal Dionne, Seventy Harvard Road. My question had to do with, um, the deep cleaning. I know we're doing one on Wednesday, which then protects Cohort B. Are we doing a second one then after Cohort B after Friday to protect Cohort A?
I see, yeah, I see Steve Mark, our business manager, nodding his head and putting the thumbs up. So yes, uh, over Friday and the weekends, we fully, that, that's, we're gonna do that, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have Tracy. Tracy Tetch, your name and your street and your question, please?
Hi, my name's, hi, my name's Tracy Tetch. I'm a teacher at Russell Street. And I am from Tuxbury, well, currently Woburn. Um, and I just have a question going back to subs. Um, well, it's actually maybe more of a guidance ask than a question. Um, I think we all know as teachers and people who've worked in schools that when we're feeling under the weather, it at times is easier to just go in, whether it be, um, to fight through the cold rather than writing sub plans, the guilt of not being with your kids or the guilt of there being a shortage of assistance if they need to be pulled to cover your room. Um, and I remember at the beginning of all this COVID business that I think I saw it on the news or something where they would say, oh, if you're not feeling well, just stay home, just stay home, just stay home. I know that it would be great if we could just use our best judgment, depending upon how we're feeling. But the symptoms are all so similar or can be so similar. As the school committee and as all of you have been working hard towards this, do you encourage us as teachers to stay home if we're not feeling well? I don't want it to, as just a regular cold, if that makes any sense, like.
Yes. Um, I, I saw Dr. Clenchey raising his hand, but before, before I let him chime in on that, uh, guidance to our families and our staff is going to be that if you are exhibiting symptoms, as a matter of fact, we want you to use your best judgment, but if you come into the building and we realize you're exhibiting symptoms, then we're gonna, there's a protocol for that. Um, we are very mindful that the winter could be challenging as we deal with the continued existence of COVID mixed with a typical flu season. Um, and that's why we know full well that we may need, may need to, uh, we would definitely revisit the decision-making and may need to change our course, depending on a lot of those factors. If, if we just have so much absenteeism from our students and/or staff because, not because of COVID, but just because of the presentation of COVID-like symptoms, that will be a, a reason why we would definitely think about, hey, at some point, we need to go into a remote, fully remote, uh, learning and remote teaching mode. Um, and, and we know we, we, if we need to do that, we'll be able to do it.
Okay, thank you. I think the, um, understanding to, or the expectation that you guys have of there being teachers being out more often because they might present with symptoms that aren't actually COVID but cold, that you guys have that understanding makes me at least feel a little bit better, knowing that I'm, I might have to ask to be out even though I don't want to be.
Right. Dr. Clenchey, can I ask you, just can you, uh, confirm the, the, that, that protocol?
Uh, yes, and, and I'm actually, I'm really glad Tracy brought that up this evening because we're, we're dealing with a rather fluid situation and, and we fully expect that, uh, we're gonna have students and staff that, that are exhibiting, uh, one or two symptoms of COVID nineteen and, and we're gonna have to be as cautious as possible. So what I envision as we move forward, i- if a teacher has a couple of symptoms, but they're still feeling really, you know, like well enough to, to offer instruction, we would, we would have them do that remotely and, and we would obviously provide somebody in their classroom to, to supervise. I mean, we, we want to ensure that, that our staff are supported as much as we can and so are our students. And to me, it makes sense that if we have a teacher that, that, uh, is, is feeling well, uh, that they, they be able to continue to, to, to teach kids remotely. And, uh, that, that would offer better quality of instruction for, for our students. So, uh, I'm really glad you brought that up, Tracy, because we really haven't talked about that on camera at all, or very much anyway, until now.
Well, thank you so much. That helps me feel better and knowing that I'll still be able to keep the kiddos safe too. So thank you.
So, so Mike, can I ask a clarifying question there?
Um, yeah.
We, an earlier, um, speaker mentioned that we're using word remotely in a couple of different ways. So, so say I'm a teacher, Kelly, and I have a, a couple of symptoms that could be associated with COVID. I shouldn't come to the building. Um, what you're saying is that there may still be a chance for me to instruct my students from an offsite location, but that means the district would have to pay an adult to be in the room to keep the kid safe? Is that the challenge?
Uh, that, that's right. And, and we're looking at, at short-term substances and or, or substitute teachers or, or whoever we bring in, which would, it, it just depends on the situation, Brad. But, uh, we're gonna have to be extra cautious and, and, uh, a- as, as educators and, and, and just as, it doesn't even have to be educators. People that work have a tendency to continue to work i- if they have a sore throat or, or sniffles, et cetera, or congested. And, and we're just gonna have to be really cautious this year as we move forward. We can't take any chances. So, uh, we fully expect more, more people to be absent because of that. I have a nice little summary chart that we've, we've created. Uh, we're still tweaking it with the Board of Health, but, uh, that will be given to every teacher and sent out to every parent and be on our website on the doors as you go into the schools, et cetera. And it's really a symptom check. And, and, and then it, it gives, you know, simple directions as to what one should do, uh, if, if they have one symptom or, or sometimes it's a combination of symptoms, depending on what the symptom is. But we, we fully expect more absenteeism a- a- as a result of being so cautious.
Um, I just want to throw out a couple of other things to, to keep in mind about that. Uh, first of all, that, all that's gonna have to be negotiated. Um, we, we can't simply ask a teacher or, or demand a teacher who we are asking to be absent or, or, or make her self-absent because of the protocols we've put in place to, you know, teach unless they felt like they, they were able and wanted to. Um, there has to be, that has to be negotiated. The union definitely has the right to weigh in on that and we will figure that out with them. Um, the other thing is, is that, you know, that, that type of solution is feasible, but I don't think any of us would agree that it's, it's, you know, what we want to be doing. Um, each situation, depending on the grade and the subject matter and the circumstance surrounding that, teacher's absenteeism will go a long way towards determining whether or not we think that works or a substitute works or, or something else. Um, so some of that's negotiated, some of that's gonna be the administration's call on a case-by-case basis. Um, it's all gotta get figured out.
Okay. Christine Berndret, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, my name's Christina Berndret. I, um, reside in Tingsboro. I'm a teacher at the Russell Street Elementary School. Um, this is just to kind of go with the substitute, um, comments that have been coming up. Um, as a special educator, and I know that there are some members that are also special educators. Um, there had been talk about pulling, um, assistants. And as a special education educator, you work with assistants to help support your students. And I think one thing that really needs to be known, and those of you that, um, work in schools know that when you, when an assistant is pulled, that assistant is being pulled away from the direct services that are outlined in a student's IEP, which you need to think about, um, compliance and becoming non-compliant to a student's IEP. So if, um, student assistants are pulled for that, then, um, I worry about where that support is, that support being taken from the kids. So that's just something to think about.
Dr. Clenchey, can I ask you to weigh in on that? I, I thought you addressed that a moment ago where the, you asserted that special ed teaching assistants wouldn't be pulled for the purposes of covering for a classroom teacher.
That's right. Our, our plan, uh, would, would be not to do that, but I'd also like to, to point out that, uh, ed assistants are, are not certified to, to give services without being under the direction of a teacher. So I, I just want to add that component to the convers- conversation.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Um, I'm talking about sometimes like that is correct. In the, in the general ed classroom, sometimes they're, they help with the in-class support. That's what I'm kind of saying that they might get pulled from. And then the other point to that is, um, of the fifteen years I've been at Russell Street and, um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't had any general education assistance. So they would all come from, um, special ed. So I'm just, I'm just looking out for the assistants that work, um, in our school. And also just when those assistants would have to go into other classrooms, they're being exposed to different rooms when we're trying to keep them in cohorts. So I just wanted to, um, put that out just for thinking points.
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna ask for some clarification in a moment. I just, the last comment you made, I, I want to make sure people understand, the cohort that we're talking about is, is not the same cohort that is being used in other models for trying to mitigate the spread of COVID. We're not gonna be able to achieve that. The, the, the cohorts are going to mix. The students and staff are going to mix throughout the building throughout the day, albeit with masking, social distancing, minimizing the number that are, that are in. But they're gonna go to the same bathrooms, they're gonna go to the same cafeteria, they're gonna come in through the same doorways. Um, that, so we just gotta be careful about how we think about that. Um, but I would like to ask for clarification, Dr. Clenchey. So we've had two teachers indicate that there are certain buildings that don't have gen ed assistants and they're worried that we're going to be asking sped assistance, assistance to cover classrooms. Um, and I know that the, the primary goal is not to use ed assistance for that purpose, even jet ed assistance. But can we get some clarification on those two buildings and?
We're talking about general education assistance and, and what I'm gonna do after hearing this, uh, is ask the, the principals to submit their lists of ed assistance so that I can verify uh, who exactly is a sped ed assistant and a general ed assistant. I think that's important. I know we, we switch around, uh, ed assistants every year and, and I just want to make sure that something hasn't happened in the schools that, that, uh, has resulted in our gen ed assistance being switched over to special education assistance. So I'm gonna need that clarification. Uh, I know at the middle school, uh, not too many years ago, I had five general ed assistants there. So I'm not sure they were switched over and, and, uh, it really is under the auspices of the, the PPS director. But, uh, I, I need to do a check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I just trying to look out for them.
Yep, appreciate it. Yep.
Mike Coulson, please state your name, your street and your question, please?
Mike Coulson, eighty-six Spectacle Pond Road. Um, I have two questions and they're pretty short. Um, my first one is I'm curious what we're doing as a district to try to retain teachers who might otherwise retire because of personal health concerns over COVID. We obviously value our veteran educators. So what are we trying to do to, to protect them so they don't have to retire prematurely?
Um, Dr. Clenchey can speak to that in general terms. I know that, um, what he's described to me and to the, to the negotiating team is the process for working to accommodate teachers. We know that, uh, being able to provide, uh, remote-only, uh, uh, teaching assignments at the K through five level might help that. That's one way of doing it. Um, but Dr. Clenchey, why don't you jump in and see if you can give us some more detail on that?
Our, our intent, like anybody would do when, when you're, you're interviewing or, or meeting more correctly with, with teachers that are asking for accommodations is, is determining what accommodations may work so that the, the, the teacher feels safe and supported in an environment. Just because you're asking for an accommodation doesn't mean that, that you can't come to work and, and, and teach. Uh, it depends on the severity of the accommodation. I mean, we, we, uh, have been in contact with, uh, an ADA lawyer, uh, who's helping us walk through, uh, the various applications. And our objective is to come to some type of resolution so that we can offer the, the appropriate support so that they, they can continue to be part of, uh, of the faculty. And, and as I've mentioned, in, in grade six to twelve, we, we do not have the luxury of, of having remote only. Uh, again, we're a smaller high school. I know high schools that are double the size that can't do it. But I have talked with the administration of the high school and have asked, uh, them to continue to see if there, there are some, uh, uh, unidentified areas that, that we, that we may be able to, to take a look at doing, doing something differently. So our intent is, is to keep every educator. Uh, but again, sometimes, uh, uh, what an educator would require would, would not be, uh, able to, to be given. Uh, it, it just depends on, on the accommodations they're looking for.
All right, thank you. Which leads me to question number two, which is this. Um, to the school chair, how would you describe morale in the Littleton Public Schools on the eve of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year? Teacher morale?
I, my day-to-day life does not lead me to any level of significant interaction with the teaching staff or really any of the other staff, except that this summer, I've met more with Dr. Clenchey this one summer than in all the other summers combined during my tenure. So I, I don't really have any point of reference that I can use to answer that question.
So to say that you're out of touch with teacher morale is fair then?
I, I wouldn't say, when you say out of touch, you are sort of implying that I could be in touch if I wanted to be and I'm choosing not to be. I just, I don't teach. I'm not an administrator. My children don't go to Littleton Public Schools. They're older. Um, they've, they've gone through it. Um, so I don't have as much, especially in the summer and even when I was, my kids were in school. Um, so I just don't have that frame of reference to be able to offer an opinion about that.
All right. So I appreciate all the teachers that have spoken tonight. So I think to that point, um, I think it's a very positive thing to, to welcome teachers here speaking out as much as it can be uncomfortable because as you've just said, you, you don't have a lot of contact.
It's not uncomfortable at all, but, but that's fine.
It's not uncomfortable when somebody is challenging it?
No. No, why would it? No, not for me personally.
Okay, well, for a lot of people it is, but okay, potentially uncomfortable. Um, so I think it's a great thing to have so many teachers speaking out because as the, you know, you you do the budget, you uh hire the superintendent, you create policy and those policies I think are are really important, not only because they impact students, but to having an understanding of the educators who work in this system, I think as you create policy for the school system is important. So I would ask the entire school committee to consider the more in touch that you can be with your educators, including morale, the better I think for the school system.
It's a good point. Um, it's an interesting point. I mean, the, we are not the administration. I think that, you know, when when we have three rookie uh committee members and that one of the first meetings, I think it was the first meeting we had with them, we went through the role of the school committee and and, you know, where the lines are that, you know, we that are drawn by the legislature in terms of what our role is. Um, but we are not the administration. I know that in the fourteen years going on fifteen now that I've been involved, different uh school committee members have had different levels of intervention. I know Timlin Rossi's has been on the PTA for a long time, so obviously her exposure to teachers is is greater maybe than some other school committee members. Um, I know some parents uh go at their their kids' education and their role as a parent in different ways. So some some parents are very involved and and want to reach out to their teachers and and that's great. We support that. My own personal point of view is I always regarded myself as a little bit laissez faire about that. I assumed that all the teachers my kids had were going to do a good job and I was never wrong about that. But I felt it wasn't my job to watch them month by month, week by week, day by day, that it was my responsibility to take care of my end. And I assumed that they would take care of their end uh their responsibility on their end. And as I said, I was never disappointed in that regard.
Yeah, I want to be.
For for, hold on, trying, you know, to say that we should, you know, try to reach out to as many teachers as possible. Did, you know, there's there's definitely want to have a little bit of a pulse taking as you can, but we got to be careful that we are not the administration. I think we all need to understand that. Keep that clear as school committee members and our role is different than if we were a parent or or a community member.
No, I agree. So I think that the reaching out is important and making teachers comfortable reaching out to you is equally important. I would ask you to consider.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Meredith Perry, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, I'm Meredith Perry. I actually live in Tingsborough. Um, and I teach at the high school. Um, I teach health and I'm also the um curriculum coordinator for Health and Phys Ed K to twelve. I will not make you stand up and do any squats or jumping jacks tonight, although I did think about it real quick.
I would love to stand up if you want to make us.
Um, I just wanted to take a minute and just ask you very quickly. Um, do you feel that it's safe for me as a teacher to stand in front of my students and um and teach within person? Do you feel that safe?
Uh, this one, I I would like to see what the other school committee members feel. I personally feel that based on all the uh work we've done and the input and the the guidance from public health agencies that with the masking, social distancing, the reduced number of students in the building on any given day and the current state of the public health metrics that for right now, yes, I I think it is safe uh in general for for, you know, for teachers in general. Um, but having said that, I I am going to, you know, continue to pay close attention to that. And if the determination changes, then our course our course will change. I would ask each school committee member to to weigh in on that?
Yes, I would love to hear everyone.
Yeah. We'll, you have Timlin.
You got ready to go?
Uh, Timlin, you go first.
Thanks, Mike. Um, I actually right now with, like Mike said, with all the numbers that we've gone through with how safe I feel our town is, I know that we have teachers and staff that are from outside of our little bubble of Littleton. But I think that I know I voted the hybrid model and I was very leery about it, but then going through the walkthrough and seeing the things that were set up and seeing all the safety measures that all of the administration administrators in each of the building are putting into place. I really think that we can get back into the schools safely and for not only the students, but for you as the teachers. It that's a big concern for me too, and I know you're all concerned about that, but it weighs heavily on me and I really want you back in the classroom with your students as I know you want to be back there. And if I didn't feel it was safe enough, I would have never voted that way. So as of right now, it could change tomorrow if our metrics change.
Absolutely.
If we have a spike, it could change, my feelings could change tomorrow. But right now I do think that the teachers would be safe going back into the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, as a teacher, right now, I would concur. I I feel confident that it's um safe to go back into the schools. Um, that being said, I completely understand um being a little hesitant. Uh, I know I'm a teacher. I'm going back to school next week and I'll be working directly with kids and it's a little, it's a little nerve-wracking. So um, but I I think, you know, I I follow the statistics daily. Uh, I do think right now it is uh it's safe for my children and the teachers to return. Um, but I do think that we do have to keep a close eye on it because as Timlin said, I think it can change very quickly and I think we have to be aware of that. So um, in short answer, yes, I do feel it's safe right now.
Justin?
Um, yes, I feel it's safe. I if collectively, if we didn't feel it was safe, I think we'd be having a very different conversation tonight. So the data supports it. Well, you know, any medical professional that offers an opinion essentially in our area is indicating that we could safely go back in person, full in person. Uh, we're opting for hybrid. And uh, my, I might, you know, we got a letter and email from our pediatrician. They're recommending in-person learning uh with the with the data that we have. So it's a resounding yes right now. And as everyone said, the information is subject to change. We'll keep an eye on it and if we need to, we'll we'll make a change.
Brad?
I agree with what they said. Um, as Timlin said, it was an agonizing vote. I ended voting against the hybrid plan originally, but that is um the public health data is making me more and more confident. This is, and I certainly support the decision the school committee made. Um, and I support it more now. Um, I'm a teacher myself. I was um on campus today trying out my mask and and trying on a little speaker I'm going to wear on my belt. Um, and um, I'll see my students next week. And um, and I I feel safe doing it and um I think we've created an environment that's going to be as safe as as possible. And it's certainly safe according to all the public health experts.
All right, thank you, everyone. Meredith, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I actually have a follow-up to that. So if you are all telling me that this is safe and I am going to be in the school next week, may I ask then why you are still meeting via Zoom?
Uh, sure. We addressed that a couple of meetings ago. We actually have met in person. We're comfortable meeting in person. Um, we we met in an executive session earlier this summer and we actually contemplated uh starting to meet in public session in person. There's a couple of of issues with that. One is that even though we can meet in person, there are still limits on the number of people that could be in a meeting room with us. The state is mandating that. Uh, and obviously we have a ton of public input. Now, we could meet in person and then still integrate remote attendance for for people that aren't in the room. And we actually approached LCTV and said, hey, that's kind of what we want to do because we know that the Board of Selectmen has been doing that for over a month now. They told us that they're not comfortable with it, that there's been some glitches in the delivery of audio and video for those and coordinating the in-person attendees with the remote attendees. So we felt that, you know, based on the amount of public attendance and input that we've been getting, that the 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 wiser course would be to stay remote. Our goal is to get back in person. Um, we just don't know when's the right time for that based on those technological constraints. And the in the level of of attendance and input that we're getting.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I do appreciate you allowing the teachers to speak too because I do think it's important for everyone to have their input. So I appreciate it.
Yep, we agree. We agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Shayna Garlici, your name, your street and your question, please?
Um, hi, Shayna Garlici. I'm on Boxwood Drive in Littleton. And I was just wondering um if there's been any collection of the total cost that's been spent on reopening the schools for the hybrid plan um in terms of PPE, extra furniture, um just all the extra add-ons that are directly related to opening um under the hybrid plan during COVID.
Um, we haven't done an analysis of that yet. I mean, obviously the extra PPE is is an obvious example of a cost that we wouldn't otherwise incur. Having said that, there are actually areas where we're going to incur less cost. So it may balance out to some degree. The other thing is that there are uh there's government funding that is available for PPE that we're we're trying to get as much of that as we can. So it in we haven't started the school year yet, so we're still figuring a lot of that out. But as we get into the school year, our normal uh procedure is to get regular updates on the budget and and how it's being spent. So we're going to keep a close eye on that. The other thing to keep in mind about that is the the one side of it is the is the side of the equation is the side you brought up, our expenses. The other thing that we're trying to keep a close eye on is our where our revenue or the amount of money that we can spend comes from. The state has not finalized their overall budget for the this current fiscal year. They've passed two continuing resolutions to to fund the government, the state government and local municipalities uh with local aid as they try to figure it out. They're trying to figure out how impactful the shutdown in the spring was to the economy and what that's going to mean for tax receipts. We're hoping that we'll we'll be, if if we get level funded on local aid in chapter seventy, we think we'll be fine. Um, but if they cut local aid, that's going to be a totally different story. So we're trying to keep an eye on that as well. A lot of that is is undetermined at this point, but it will be part of our our regular business as we get going into the school year to track that and be able to report on it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Wendy Abbott's, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, yes, um Wendy Abbott's, Ten Trot Road. Um, I know this week there was a memo that at least four teachers are leaving Shaker Lane. And then Dr. Clancy stated tonight that the total number currently stands at seventeen and it could go up. Um, my son is a senior at the high school and two of the teachers that spoke tonight are two of his five teachers of a senior year and they're in very specialized subjects. So I'm just wondering, are we going to be able to staff those specialized classes by September sixteen?
Uh, Dr. Clancy, you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Wendy. The the seventeen number that I gave you uh referred to teachers that were asking for accommodations or or to teach remotely or for sometime, some some type of leave. Uh, I've had two retirement uh requests uh given to me at this point in time.
How about the question about if if we do, if we do have retirements or leave or something, are we going to be able to staff the classes, especially the classes where we're, you know, particular certifications are required to be able to teach that that class?
That that's my main question.
Certainly our intent. Uh, it it depends on the subject area. There there are still a surplus of teachers in in most areas. Uh, when you get into some specialty areas in in high school, it's it's a little harder. But uh generally, uh, there there's still a good supply of teachers out there.
Yeah. I mean, your your point is good, Wendy, though. The obviously a lot of of the turnover that we expect year to year happens much sooner than this and gives us a much larger window to post and interview and hire. Uh, we're all dealing with a constrained timeframe in that regard. And then obviously we're also dealing with teachers that may not have contemplated any type of leave or retirement this year, but keep based on the circumstances that uh are unfolding, it may feel like that is the appropriate thing for them to do. So um, it it's more of an issue than it would otherwise be. Um, but as Dr. Clancy said, uh, you know, our goal is to fill it up uh where we have, you know, retirements or leaves and uh hopefully we do get, we always strive to get the most qualified person for the job. And uh we hopefully do that. Brad, I see you have your hand up. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I do. I just, uh, when all this round of public comment began, I I forgot who it was. I think it was maybe the LEA president mentioned um the possibility of us getting an update, a public update on these numbers and how they evolve. I think that'd be helpful. So if we meet again in two weeks or whenever the next time we talk, it might be useful to get those those numbers. But also be useful, I'm I'm new to this, um, to put them in context. I don't know if two retirements is what we would expect. Um, I what what the typical turnover is over maybe a three or five-year period. Um, so we can um, we can put in context. We, of course, we don't want to lose quality teachers, experienced teachers. That's a loss. Um, my guess is that um we lose some every year. And so knowing just how much this year is different than the other years, getting a hard number for this year and comparing it to other years might be useful information for all of us.
I I I think, Brad, we we can certainly do that, but there there are a lot of factors that that come into play. It depends on the number of teachers in a given year that are eligible for retirement, et cetera.
Absolutely, understood.
What what's different now is is and and it's not just education. We have a number of people that are close to retirement in in many professions and and they're really asking themselves, uh, really, do do I want to work that extra year or two years when I can retire now, given the fact that that I'm not comfortable with with COVID nineteen and 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 being in 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 public in general. And I think a lot of people are are doing some serious soul searching out there at this point in time. So I I fully anticipate and and we have had two retirements. Uh, uh, I I I don't know exactly what the reasons are and I certainly couldn't disclose them. That that's confidential, but uh, I know that the conversations I've had with with a number of people, including some of our staff, are are those exact conversations. So uh, these are tough decisions that that people are are facing and and uh, you know, depending on the age that that they are, they they have to ask themselves some tough questions. Do I go another two years? Do I go another year? Or or do I I retire now and and I'm 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 decreasing my risk of being exposed?
All right, Wendy, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I just, I just feel bad because I hate that they're being, you know, have to make these difficult decisions and for some reason, if we go back to all remote learning, then it's just kind of a bummer because they could have been here remotely. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Jessica, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, my name is Jessica Schoffel. Um, I am a teacher at Russell Street and I live on Wompas Ave in Acton. Um, my question is um surrounding masks. Um, I know that teachers, staff, um, students will be required to wear masks in the buildings, but I haven't seen any guidance on um like types of masks that are allowable. Um, there was a recent study that came out of Duke looking at the different types of masks and their effectiveness in blocking particles. So um, that study was showing that the net gators and any type of mask that has a valve on it was not as effective in um stopping the wearer's particles from spreading into the space around them. So I was wondering if the district was planning about um any guidance for families, staff on what types of masks would be considered acceptable for wearing in school?
Uh, ye- yes, we are, Jessica. Thank you for asking that question. We we've been uh having conversations with uh the uh actually people that we met with today from uh Little General Hospital and and also uh an epidemiologist in town and and asked for advice and and we will be putting a a list out of of uh masks that we feel that uh would be the safest mask to wear. I mean, generally, they they should be three ply minimum and uh certainly no uh exhalation valves on the mask. And 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 we'll we'll get as detailed as we can. I mean, we've ordered some masks in and uh have actually sent the specs to some some people to to check them for us as well. So that's that's a that's a good question. I'm I'm glad you brought it up.
Thanks. And um, so do you have an idea at this point of like where that information will be and how um how it will get to families, how it will get to staff? I just, um, I would want to avoid a situation where um people were showing up with um masks that weren't protective enough on the first day, you know, so how will we get that information out there in a way so that we know um people have it?
And Dr. Clancy, I mean, the mask, the mask guidance is certainly important. Uh, but maybe you could answer that question just in general, wh- what is our thoughts on our processes that we're planning for just disseminating information? thoughts on our processes that we're planning for just disseminating information regarding masks and distancing and norms, I think is the term I heard us use about how we, we want to get our students and staff to, you know, realize what it's going to take to be in school these days?
Well, yeah, part of that is, is certainly going to happen during the 10 days of, of training. Uh, we're also going to send letters home. Uh, our, uh, health nurses, our head nurse has, has already devised some letters, et cetera, and, and they're tailored them to each school or grade span. Uh, we will be sending letters out to families as well, uh, with that information in them. We want to make sure that everybody understands, uh, exactly what needs to be done in, in order to keep everybody as safe as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Rosaria Coches, your question, your street and your name, please?
Hi, Rosaria Coches, Roxbury Drive, Littleton, Mass. Um, I wanted to echo some of the concerns about the substitute coverage um, that other people brought up. And I really appreciate, Mike, you saying that we could get to a critical mass of absenteeism. Um, I really worry about us being able to sustain the hybrid model with the protocol that staff have to follow in terms of if they have symptoms staying home. Um, the substitute coverage at Shaker Lane has been problematic. Um, so I, I guess I have two points. One is that I worry about that reaching that critical mass of absenteeism very quickly. Um, if teachers have to stay home, um, based on the symptom protocol. And the second, um, as a special ed teacher, I have to echo, uh, the whole concern about the pulling of special ed teachers, I mean, special ed assistants for coverage. That's a reality. I heard it at the middle school, I heard it at Russell Street and I echo that for Shaker Lane. Um, special ed assistants are asked to cover for classrooms. Special ed assistants are asked to cover for other special ed assistants that, um, have more significant, uh, servicing students with more significant needs. So as a special education teacher myself, my job is to advocate for, uh, students on IEPs and, and when we use special ed assistants for coverage, um, that doesn't sit well with me. Um, and I just, I really need to say that I worry about that practice being tenfold in the future. Um, and I think that it's a serious concern that the district needs to address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anne, state your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, this is Dave Neary, uh, Gray Farm Road, Littleton. Um, Anne's husband. I'm, so I have two questions. The first is, has the district considered making exceptions for specific teachers on a case by case basis? Based on, uh, the environment they work in and, and, and things like that? And the second question is, uh, not coming to me right now.
Well, while you think about it, uh, yes, the, to answer the first question is, there is a process for, for teachers to work with the administration to make determinations about, uh, what accommodation levels, uh, they think are necessary and that we think we can provide. And that process is, it has already started and is ongoing.
Okay, I, I remember the second question. It's, it's for other school districts and other states that have opened their schools earlier and are now coming back on those decisions. Are you keeping an eye on, on what's happening around the country? Uh, as a way to maybe anticipate rather than, uh, react to, uh, to what we expect will happen in September, uh, here?
I, I, I'll let the other school committee members chime in, um, if they want to, but we haven't done that as a, as a committee. We think that the public health metrics that we should be presenting and evaluating are specific to our circumstance. But we've, I know, I know that I've seen quite a bit of that and I know that we've had many community members forward us that type of information to help us inform that. We appreciate that. Um, we try to, uh, make sure that we, we respond to each of those emails to at least say thank you for sending that along. Um, all I'll say is, is that, um, mo- most if not all of those districts or, or, or areas of the country that struggled were not in the same uh, situation relative to the public health metrics that Massachusetts is and Littleton is and New England is really. Um, so it's something that we, we are looking at and we're, 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 we're going to all find out what's going to happen. But, um, it, it, it may be an apples and oranges type thing. As a matter of fact, that's what I'm hoping for personally. I'm hoping that we have a much better outcome because our starting point is significantly different from many of those areas, starting points. But does anybody else that wants to chime in on that? Feel free.
Just, I, just, we're all reading, um, my guess is, is we're all reading everything we can about this. We're looking at the examples that didn't work. Looking at some examples that have worked. I think some of the European examples, um, maybe more apples to whatever fruit is close to an apple, um, for us, um, because the pub, basic public health situation there, when they went back, is closer to ours. But there's no, you know, we're, we're trying to figure this out and we're doing it alongside of, I think Mike said, 75% of the other Massachusetts districts. But yes, we're all, the, the short answer is yes, we're all reading all of this stuff and trying to make sense of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Dan Kane, your name, your street and your question, please?
Hi, Dan Kane, Whitetail Way here in Littleton. Um, kind of going back a little bit, I apologize. Um, Mike had mentioned that he had, when someone had asked about school committee meetings in person and kind of raised two rationales for why we're continuing to meet via Zoom. Um, to make sure I have it straight, one of it was that certainly having the committee meet as well as having a large enough space to meet per the regs and, and, and norms right now really wasn't possible. Um, the other piece was there was concern with meeting in person for the school committee and having the technological side for audience participation. And there were concerns with having that, um, that there were some glitches and having challenges having that function. I guess my concern is having students going back into school kind of, um, violates that first piece of the school committee's concern of meeting in person with an audience that certainly seems like having our teachers, our staff go back. Nope, that does not. I'm seeing lots of heads saying no, that that's not appropriate. So I'm seeing what looks like a classroom full of people on my screen right now. So.
No, w- we're happy to meet in person and we're happy to meet in person with, with the, the number allowed to be in any space per the guidelines put forth by the state. And as soon as they, they widen the guidelines, we would widen our, our, you know, level. In Littleton, we do have some constraints on the spaces we can use for public meeting, especially if we want LCTV to, to broadcast it live, which for school committee meetings is our preference. So that wasn't the issue. The issue is that because we can't get everybody in the room, even if though we're comfortable with it, and there's so many more people that want to attend and, and, and offer public input. And it's not the, it's the specific LCTV technological requirements, which are significantly different than the technology that we're going to be using to deliver remote learning and, and, uh, at our schools.
Mike, could we have Judy Reed just?
Yeah, Judy, I'm sorry. I don't know if she was just waving or she actually wanted to chime in on that.
I'll chime in. So right now, the only room that we could do hybrid meeting in, which is five people in room 103 and me, um, connected to Zoom. School committee has been getting upwards of 400 people on Zoom. And given the technical glitches that we have had during select board where there's only been 20 people on Zoom, I did not feel comfortable recommending that that happened. So we are normally at a school committee meeting, you have your five committee members plus administration. Um, we can only have five people in the room. So they'd have to decide who would be in the room and who would be remote as well. So really, my recommendation was to keep going with the number of participants on Zoom remote until such time as either our numbers dwindle or we can fix our glitches.
Um, so I, I guess I have a follow-up question then. So certainly you're having, I know how incredibly technologically savvy Judy is with, with this piece and trying to coordinate a Zoom meeting with an in-person same time. I guess I'm worried about, one, if we're using Zoom for this meeting, why are we not using the Google platform, which we are expecting our, our teachers to be using? One, stress test the system before we start putting teachers and students and remote students all into a live environment on day one. Stress test the system now utilizing the resources you have at hand, which is Judy, the school committee and an audience. Um, would be a great opportunity to do that. Uh, I guess I'm just kind of curious is that if, if you're having difficulty with, with having a full-time technologically savvy person running this, then I guess I'm concerned about 50 to 75 classroom teachers trying to do this.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm not explaining it correctly. The, the challenge is with LCTV feeding it into a live television stream. It's not feeding it into a Zoom stream or anything like that. Um, it's getting it to fit into the live television stream, which we're not going to be doing at, at our schools. Um, and then in terms of the stress testing, yes, we are actively, our staff is actively stress testing our bandwidth and the, the equipment and, and everything else that's ongoing. Um, and, and right now we're getting assurances that things look good. Um, so I, I hope I'm cleared it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Kristy Elman, your question, please? Kristy Elman?
Sorry, it was a bit of a delay.
Yes, I apologize.
Oh, perfect. Um, I missed a bit of meeting, so if I already, if this is already addressed, just tell me, nevermind.
I'm sorry, can you just give us your address?
Oh, sure. Uh, Griss Mill Road in Littleton.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, this is just regarding mask breaks in the classroom and, um, I'm just, I'm struggling to wrap my mind around. The, it's my understanding that in Russell Street, the children will eat, uh, their lunch in the classroom and will also have a mask break in the classroom. So where I get a little confused, and I understand the six foot distance and I, I do understand all that, but, and I certainly don't want to get into the HVAC conversation in great detail, but I just want to understand if the kids have their masks off for any period of time in that classroom? Does it somewhat mitigate the point of wearing the mask the rest of the time if there's a half an hour for lunch and a 15 minute mask break later? And if it does, can't those things happen outside? So when the kids are in the classroom, there's just always a mask on so that, again, don't want to use the, the famous letters, but just so that we're really stacking the deck in our favor and whatever air they're breathing in that classroom is masked, if you will. If they're going to take their mask off, they're somewhere else.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll let the administrators speak to how the mask breaks are going to work and, and the question relative to how we think lunch is going to go in, in terms of being, students being, not wearing their mask during lunch. I just do want to caution, I know, Kristy, you asked not to get into the HVAC. I'll use those letters discussion. Um, I just want to make sure everybody understands, none of our HVAC systems and no public school HVAC systems are designed to trap that minute a particle. The goal is for them to churn fresh air through the room and, and, and exhaust, uh, old air. Uh, and that's how you get rid of, of the particles. The filtering and things for those systems are not hospital grade or clean room grade where they're actually going to trap uh, microbes that, that transmit. So as long as we're clear on that.
No, for sure.
Yeah, but, but you're right. No, you, your point about.
The reasoning, right? So if I, if I, if I asymptomatic, if I, let's just say there's a child who's asymptomatic.
Right.
And they cough.
Yep.
Uh,
With the mask off.
Mask is off because it's a mask break or they sneeze or they do whatever or they, that's just assuming normal things, not like they're getting all, I'm, you know, in fifth grade, I'm going to do something weird because that's fun.
Right.
Um, you know, there's just a certain practicality to, okay, now you've created stuff in the air. Can we avoid that in some way, shape or form? And try to keep the air inside the room. I don't want to say pristine, but
Right.
Give it a fighting chance. Exactly.
Right. A- again, I'll, I'll ask in, in one moment for, for the administrators to weigh in on the mask breaks. I will say that the reading that I've done, and if any other school committee members want to contradict me, feel free, because I could be wrong, is that the combination of the masks and the six foot distancing sort of give you a double uh, cushion. And that if you remove the six foot distancing and keep the mask, you're still okay. And if you remove the mask but keep the six foot distancing for a limited period of time, you're still okay. Not ideal, but you're okay. It's when you, well, hold on, it's when you either lose the mask and the distance or you lose the mask and the distance for, or even if it's six feet, for an extended period of time that your risk factor starts to rise to the, to a level of significant concern.
A- and I will say that's the, actually that you said it better than I did. It's the extended period of time. So you know, so for, and there's also a lot of data coming out that six foot is like a, a mean, right? So depending on your lung capacity, if I, you know, I might need 10 feet, you might need three feet, you know? So six foot is a, is a reasonable average because what are you really going to do? But I think you've said it. It's the, it's the time and the concentration. And if we're introducing those two variables into the hybrid classroom, it sounds like a dangerous, you know, the whole thing's kind of on a knife edge anyway. So it feels like that tips it in a way that maybe could be avoided.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll let the administration weigh in on how we think the mask breaks and lunch are going to work in terms of the concerns Christie's raising.
Um, I can speak to Russell Street. Um, we, I, I, it's exactly as, um, you said, Chairman Fontenella, we built in the, um, the distancing in the classroom. So as you saw on the tour, we have six feet between desks, um, and kids will be sitting at every other. So we actually, between people, have more than six feet in most of our locations. Um, we built in our mask break, um, in most circumstances at Russell Street in the morning while kids are eating snack and they'll be sitting at their desk to do that. Um, and that's, you know, about 10 minutes. Um, and then their, their second mask break will be while they're eating lunch. Um, and again, they'll be sitting at their desks, um, eating, not having a mask off, walking around. Um, they'll have the mask off when they're outside, which is the ideal at recess time. Um, and if they have a mask break in the afternoon, um, in some classes that are in class for an more extended time in the afternoon, they're, um, it, they'll be working quietly and at their desk again. Um, so our mask breaks are in conjunction with, um, the distancing between students, as you said.
Yeah, I can add for the high school too, um, similar to Cheryl and, uh, or what Chairman Fontenella outlined, Kristy, that we're really counting on the distance there. If it, if there's any mask break or even someone just removing a mask in a classroom to take a sip of water, we want, you know, we, that came up today in our conversation with, uh, the representatives from Lowell General. And we were, we're going to follow up with our school nurse to get clear guidance and clarification on this so that students are instructed exactly what the, what the exact protocol is, when and where you can remove your mask and for how long. Some people have said, you know, two minutes or so for a break and, you know, I've heard different, you know, for a quick break in a classroom. Others say, don't remove the mask in the class. Um, so we're going to follow up and get some clarification. At the high school, when it comes to the cafeteria at lunch, uh, we're going to, um, we actually reviewed this a little bit today um, as a team and we were looking at the installation of, um, plexiglass dividers to also assist with the six foot distancing to ensure, you know, that there's a, you know, a safe uh, clean way for students to, um, eat lunch and have the mask off while they're eating lunch. Um, and the other piece of this during mask breaks is we're going to encourage some movement breaks. When I say that, to go outside, we want, um, we don't necessarily want students moving with their mask off uh, because of the exhaling that's involved with that. They'll be out there potentially will go to a place where they're at a greater distance than even six feet and be able to remove a mask. Uh, but I would, I appreciate the question. Uh, we want to make sure that we provide very clear guidance to the faculty on how to help with the management of the mask breaks and very clear guidance to students and parents about what is expected.
Absolutely. I, I appreciate that. I just, my follow-up question to kind of connect the dots between these two is so for in the high school, if there's a concern about taking a drink of water if I'm sitting in class and how long am I taking that mask off? And maybe it's two minutes and maybe it's, don't remove it at all. How does that sync up with actually eating lunch at your classroom in Russell Street? I think that's where I get completely lost in the, how these two things happen.
Yeah.
Like how these two things can both be true.
Yeah, Kristy, the, one of the things that came up was the perception of that and how long it would last in the high school for a quick, you know, sip of water, literally taking, you know, just a couple of, you know, less than a, a few seconds to have a sip of water. The, the hydration issue that, but the person we talked to today said is really important. We want students to stay hydrated while they're wearing masks for the same periods of time. So that would be a quick break when I mentioned the water break. Uh, the two-minute break is something we need to sort of figure out or, you know, whether they step outside the room or where that happens. Uh, how, how long and when and where can students take the mask off in the classroom? Um, when instruction's underway, I think we'd go back to the I think we'd go back to the six-foot distance that was emphasized by Cheryl, uh, as well as Chairman Fontanella. That distance uh is gonna be, is is gonna be really essential. I think there's also opportunity to provide some additional um barrier partitions for classroom desks that we're looking at. We discussed that with the uh business manager today, and we've actually been reviewing, a lot of it already been ordered. So that might help with some of the elementary schools as well.
So is is that part of the plan then for Russell Street? Because that's where I get lost, kids ten and up are supposed to spread the same as adults. And we're going through a lot of, a lot of painstaking protocols to make sure these children wear the right kind of masks and they have enough layers, and they're sitting face forward, and we're doing all those things. But I I just simply don't understand, and I I clearly am pushed, want to be a part of the hybrid scenario for my kid, who has an IP and blah, blah, blah. But I'm just struggling with how that doesn't all go out the window the minute they're sitting at their desk with their masks off for ten minutes eating, which is more than two minutes. And they're having, you know, I get sitting quietly and not running around, but I I just don't understand why these breaks, why we can't use cafeteria, or the gym can't be used, or other locations that would be more appropriate to take the mask off. So I'm not sure we're gonna get to an answer on this, but because I I think you're gonna go back to six feet. But that's just, the the disconnect between the two is is jarring for me.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I I think the other thing to keep in mind is that the protocols that we're coming up with are are being vetted in our our basically the same protocols that are being used across the state and have been provided, guidance has been provided that these are appropriate by, you know, DESI and the public health agencies. Um, I I don't expect that to give you the assurance that you're looking for. This is definitely anxiety-provoking to think about it. Um, but w- we think that our our science and and the research that's supporting it is sufficient um to to at least, you know, work. My greater concern, honestly, individually, is that this model works in theory and in practice, the ability to get the populations to comply may be a a bigger challenge. Um, and maybe
Hundred percent.
reveal itself to be, you know, s- so problematic that we have to rethink how we're doing it.
Yeah, no, it's it's a, it's a lot to put everybody's safety on, like, you know, and a spontaneous six, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-old paying attention. So I hear you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Christie.
Chairman Fontanella, we have one more question, and following this question, Lynn Snow has asked to speak before we move on.
Okay, yep, terrific.
Eileen, your question, your street, your name, please?
Hi, it's Eileen Weeda Gardner, Maplehurst Road. So I have a question around, it's a multiple question, surprisingly enough, around um the substitute scenario in Littleton, you know, as a parent of when I saw the note that came out that said four teachers were leaving from um Shakey Lane, I had gone on School Spring, and I noticed those positions were posted on the twenty-fifth of this month. Um, and then I'm hearing that there are potentially seven, seventeen other accommodations that the district is working, working out with their teachers. I understand that's private. Um, and I know we've, uh, Dr. Clutchy had mentioned that we have a pool of subs and that that pool of subs may be shared with other districts. So I'm curious to know a few things when it comes down to that. One, I, if those positions were posted on the twenty-fifth and you're getting applicants now, I'm assuming you're not, haven't hired anyone for it yet because it's the twenty-seventh, we're talking thirteen business days before the start of school, and kids walk in, and three business days before the training when teachers come in. Um, how many substitutes do we have currently in the pool? Um, so that would be one question, how many substitutes are there that the school can easily call upon that are in the pool? What are we doing to outreach to more subs? Um, because I didn't see an applicant, I didn't see an advertisement for that on School Springer anywhere else that said Littleton was looking for substitutes. Um, and then, I guess, how many of those substitutes are highly qualified? So say the physics teacher leaves and doesn't come back, and on September sixteenth, a class opens. What is the likelihood of us having a highly qualified person in there to work with those students? And yeah, I just, I want to know those numbers, what's the ratio? Who are our subs? How highly qualified are they? Can they just take a curriculum and run with it? Um, and for the subs that aren't highly, highly, highly qualified, how many years have they been in the district? How well do they know what the curri-, you know, are they AIDS? Are you, as I don't necessarily like to talk about in public form, that I have two kids on IEPs, and I don't want things pulled from them. I don't want AIDS pulled from my children. And, you know, I
Yep, yep, thank, thank you, Eileen. Dr. Clutchy, can you address some of the issues relative to the hiring window and substitutions and the qualifications of our substitution, substitutes?
Yeah, and 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 first of all, I mean, I I I've said it twice this evening. Uh, we're not pulling special education uh assistants out and putting them in the subpool. We have general education assistants, and I've asked our new PPS director to comment on that, comment on that later on. Uh, currently, we have thirty, thirty substitute teachers in our pool. We're gonna be advertising for more, but we have thirty, uh, now, that's the number that was given to me. They have various qualifications, a a good number of our subs are retired teachers. Uh, so their their qualifications uh vary. Uh, sometimes we we have retired chemistry teachers, math teachers, English teachers, it just, it just really depends. Uh, I I can't give you a definitive answer and a breakdown of 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 the qualifications of the thirty people that we have. But uh, we're, we're doing the best we can, like, like every district is. So every district is having the conversations that we're having this evening. And actually, I feel good that we have thirty at this point in time. So I I that's all I can really offer, offer you, but uh, again, I'm gonna reiterate again that that our intent is is not to to pull our special education assistants out and put them in the subpool.
Kelly, can I, can I ask you to to address specifically, like, how's our hiring timing going to fill any open positions we have so that we wouldn't be relying on substitutes?
Say that one more time, please.
How how are we doing in the hiring process and our window, and and do we feel confident that we're gonna be able to, if we need to replace retiring staff or staff taking leave with, rather than replacing them with substitutes, we're replacing them with actual hires? Are we confident that we're gonna be able to get there by the opening of school? And if not, how close to the opening of school do we think we'll be able to finish that hiring process?
Well, we've, we've worked out an understanding with the union, uh, the the teachers' union has a clause in their contract that says we have to advertise internally ten days before we advertise externally. Uh, we were able to work this out, and and we only have to advertise for two days for the first couple of months of school. So that's going to speed the process up. Uh, things are done electronically in this day and age, uh, we can, we can put things out uh pretty widely uh with a push of a button. So that that's gonna help the process out, I mean, but there there may be situations uh I don't know, and nobody knows from day to day, when somebody may need to take a leave of absence for a medical reason. That's part of what happens when when you have hundreds of employees. And and throughout the years that we've done this, we've, we've always managed to to find good people to take those spots for the time. Uh, because we're, we're time-crunched, that seems to be the the phrase of of uh after be, or past March thirteenth. We, we do have access, if need be, for a a learning management system to utilize if we were in a corner. Uh, we could uh purchase uh courses and 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 that come with teacher support uh from a learning management system. Uh, as you've heard me speak many times, that's certainly not my preference. We've hired teachers to uh teach classes, uh, according to the populations of students we have in our district. So we, we're, we're fully staffed. But by chance, if if somebody leaves uh on late notice, uh, we will try to find somebody. If we don't, there there are other options that we'll pursue, and one of them is is an LMS uh until we find a a teacher. Or we can, we can actually uh rely on our partnership with Middlesex College for doing enrollment classes. Uh, VHS is another venue that we use, so. I mean, we're, we're gonna do everything we can to to make sure that that everybody is covered uh as before we, or as we start the new school year. But there there are things that are unforeseen that happens, and and it's, it's no different last year or the year before, it's just this year, we we have uh, I I I think there's, there's more concern because of COVID nineteen.
Yeah, and rightfully so.
Mike, can I speak just specifically to the, to the positions at Shaker Lane, so there's not complete misunderstanding out there? So we have two retirements, one resignation, um, and another special ed teaching assistant. We have two interview, we have two sets of those teachers set up for interviews on Monday. So I'm pretty confident that we'll, we'll generate something from there, we have lots of applicants for those. Um, this special ed teaching assistant is in preschool. And preschool starts a week later than the regular grades, so we have a little bit of time there. And the other one is the PE teacher, um, which we, we're, we're looking, we, we already have someone that completed a a long-term position last year that's interested. So I do feel pretty confident that we can fill those positions that are currently at Shaker Lane right now, and I just want that to be out there.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm still gonna push back for a minute here and just say that, okay, so we have thirty subs. Dr. Clutchy had mentioned that a lot of teachers who were retired teachers often come back to sub, and I know a few of them have done so. My question is, how many of those teachers will you lose? Because as retired teachers in an older population, don't want to come back to the school and sub because of health risks, one. Two, I'm, I am gonna kind of push back, I, I think it's great that we have a partnership with MCC, that's fabulous. Um, if we can get students earning college credits while they're in high school, that's, that's stellar, beats beats the tar at AP, in my humble opinion. Um, but with that, when it comes to learning management systems, one of the things, the, one of the reasons Home sells for eight hundred, Brandon, Littleton, is the school system. In fact, on the Boston, what was it, Boston Magazine heads, Littleton is like number two on their list over the weekend. Um, that's when pulled for some reason, but it's, it was on there, and one of the reasons was class size. Um, student-to-teacher ratios, it just ah, we're here because of our excellent teachers. People buy homes in this town because of excellent teachers. And to think we're gonna lose some of them because of six weeks of remote te- teaching is, is abhorrent to me. Just, i- I, I'm, I can't state it enough. And I'm a citizen, and I have the right to do so, so I'm just gonna say, I can't state it enough that it will be such a loss for a physics teacher to disappear from, physics teachers, they're, they're not a dime a dozen. They're not everywhere, and if he goes in two days, what happens on September sixteenth? And we've had time to think about this. Like in April, we knew the possibility was there, schools would not be able to open full-time. I just, we need to rethink this, we are not serving our teachers well. And by not serving our teachers well, I really don't think we're serving our students well, nor do I think we're serving our parents well. And at the end all be all, I don't think we're serving our community as a whole well to, to be so. I get that everyone's, I get that this is hard, and I get that schools were put between a rock and a hard place. And I get you probably could have used more help from Baker and Riley, but the local decision, and I get all districts are, are struggling with it, but the local decision is the local decision. And if it's a local decision, we have the power. I don't, I feel like we're misusing it. I, I, I don't, I still don't know how many of the, our subs are highly qualified.
W- we're not gonna be able to give a detailed answer on that right now, Eileen, um, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Katie Richards, your name, your street, and your question, please?
Hi, Katie Richards, Three Cypress Lane in Littleton. Full disclosure, I am new to the district, so I have been doing a lot of listening and learning. And we all just went to church, preach, Eileen. So um actually, my question is along similar lines. Um, did I hear correctly that middle school and high school teachers do not have the option to start the school year teaching remotely?
We are currently in the middle of negotiations with the Educators Association to determine how those things are gonna be handled.
Okay, understand. It it seems to me, I'm hearing, um, you know, through all the meetings I've listened to, I'm hearing, and I I also share a lot of the same concerns about having enough teachers, you know, due to more teachers being sick or or being concerned about exposure, about, you know, concern about there being enough qualified subs. Um, you know, also wanting to protect our teachers and and accommodate their specific situations. I also share the concerns about AP classes, as I have, you know, student in AP classes. So it seems to me, you know, given these concerns, why not let middle school and high school teachers teach remotely, even if half their students are in the class? Uh, I I would think it would be easier to find a uh a class sitter, if you will, than, you know, an adequate content, uh, content provider for, you know, AP physics or something like that. So it just seems to me like that that should be something that uh should be considered. As a parent, I would rather have my kid taking an AP class from a teacher who's teaching remotely, you know, at home than from a sub that may, or even if that sub is qualified, I would prefer my, my child being taught by their regular teacher who is in a safe environment. And given what I've heard from your presentations, it seems like our technology is pretty stellar. Um, I I had great concerns at the beginning and and feel more comfortable about my kid learning, you know, remotely um when they're at home. So given the, these kind of stellar um technology setups, it would seem to me like it could be successful to have those teachers teach remotely, so just for, for your consideration, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, excuse me, Cheryl, state your name, your question, and your street, please?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Harrington, I'm a teacher at Littleton High School. And I want to circle back now to the mask issue and mask breaks. And um first, I want to state that I am a hundred percent in support of the metrics being there for us to return in person, uh, at least in a hybrid model. I I do think that uh the metrics support, you know, some amount of teaching given the appropriate um health compliance. And one of those health issues is the mask. Um, I, for those of you who don't know, I'm a former scientist, and I worked in research, and so I although it was in a different area, I have the ability to read the scientific literature and follow it, and that's what I have been doing. Um, and and as for that reason, I'm comfortable going back. I am not, however, comfortable having a mask break in my classroom. And I I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that the data is still emerging regarding the transmission of the COVID virus and that recent research has suggested that it is more than just the droplet particles, which is, you know, what we see in those sneeze ads. Um, that it could actually be an airborne uh contagion, and for that reason, I am not comfortable allowing, even with a six-foot distance, students taking a mask break in my classroom. I am comfortable teaching with masks on and then taking my students outside for their needed mask breaks or allowing a particular student who may be having a moment of like, oh, I need a mask break, going out to wherever is designated an appropriate mask um ma- unmasking location. Um, I I I really am concerned about the possibility that the transmission is more than just droplets, and I I I was compelled to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Meg, state your name, your street, and your question, please? Meg?
Hi, my name is Meg Walsh, and I live on Boxwood Drive. Um, I'm calling
Um, I'm calling, I'm calling in because I'm wondering about the teachers who need to go remote for, um, medical reasons that otherwise prevent them from being in the classroom. If we've considered letting them video in for their classes, obviously that requires another adult being present to watch the class, but letting these teachers teach remotely and whether the high school or middle school has technology to accommodate that, um, so that they can still be teaching their class, but just not standing directly in front of them? Is that something that's already been discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that capability exists and, and that is being discussed with teachers that are, that are looking for accommodations as a potential way of getting to where we all need to be for that particular staff member.
Okay, that's great. And the other thing I wanted to say is I, I would like to think as a community that we could sort of go into this recognizing that all of us have positive intentions and really come together as a community to try to make this work. I will come out and say that my son is going hybrid and I believe we should try to get kids back in the building. There are a lot of students who need to be there, but I would just like us to, as a community, to have more positive intentions and work together. And I really appreciate all the work the administration has done as well as the school committee. So thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Meg. Yep. Brad, you want to say something to that or?
No, I was just waving to Meg.
Okay. So I didn't know. Thank you, Meg. It's a, it's a, it's a good thought and a good, good philosophy. We appreciate that.
Lynn Snow? You're up? Are you, oh, you have to unmute her. Thank you, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to circle back to a couple of things. Um, just the, the question about specific masks, um, that students should be wearing. The guidance document that parents are going to be receiving does have some, um, information related to that. So, um, that will be coming out as well. But I did really want to speak to the whole, um, concern regarding special education, paraprofessionals or, or teaching assistants being pulled. Um, I share the same concern and, um, it's, it's my job to advocate for the students with special education needs as well. Um, so one of the things that, um, can be done is looking, um, looking at the teaching assistants and conducting a paraprofessional audit. Um, because we need to look at the grids and we need to make sure that we are meeting the, the service grids of the students. And then comparing that to the number of FTEs or the number of, um, teaching assistant personnel that we have in each building. And sometimes it's, it's good to kind of do that comparative analysis. Sometimes we find that we have, um, um, what we have exceeds the minutes in, in the grids. And sometimes we find that we, um, it is insufficient. And so I think it's, would be helpful at this time to, to do an audit like that and really look at if we need to, um, bring on additional teaching assistants to ensure that we, um, have the proper support to meet all the grid services.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate if you could follow through on that and, uh, you maybe even report back to the school committee and through us to the public about where we're at, um, as we get started in school. Steve Mark, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just, um, thank you. I just wanted to follow up with one, uh, comment from the bus thing. I've received a couple of emails already. So I just want to let parents know that anybody who has already registered for the buses for this year, they, if they paid, we will issue any refunds back to those parents. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No more questions, chairman?
All right. Thank you, Dorothy. Uh, next on the docket is Athletic Director Mike Lynn to talk about the potential for fall sports in Massachusetts and Littleton.
Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to participate in tonight's meeting. Do we have a, uh, slide presentation that's going to come up?
Yes, it's coming.
Okay, we can go to the next screen, the next slide, please? So just to give everybody a quick, um, history lesson here. Uh, all sports at the youth interscholastic and adult levels must follow the current EEA guidelines as released on August 13th. Uh, that's the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Um, there was some confusion, I think, earlier with their guidelines that those guidelines only pertain to youth and adult. But in this last, most recent revision, they made it clear that these would also, uh, apply to interscholastic sports as well. Following the release of those guidelines, DESI and the MIA released a joint guidance document providing structure and support for interscholastic sports on August 18th. And I did ask that all members of the school committee receive the MIA press release email. Uh, that press release email kind of really consolidated all these pieces of information that have been out there and, uh, kind of streamlined where you could find it. And I, I'm, uh, I'm hoping that each of the members of school committee have that email. Next slide, please? The MIA task force on, uh, those guidelines being released, came up with a structure. We have a, it's kind, it's somewhat radical compared to our, our normal structure. It's a four-season structure. Um, fall one, as you can see, will start two days after the start of our school year for students on, on September 18th. And as of right now, would include soccer, field hockey, golf and cross country. Uh, winter would be about the time that you would see winter start. It, it ends earlier though. And then we have a, a wedge season called fall two, which would be any fall sports that did not get played in fall one. Currently, per the guidelines, football cheer and unified basketball would fall into that season. And then spring sports would go April 26th. And it seems a little crazy, uh, July 3rd. I, I don't think we would go that far, but you do have that, you do have that option to go that far per the MIA guidelines. Um, the next bullet is currently happening. MIA sport committees are to provide guidelines and modifications for each fall sport. Modifications being probably a very key word there. Uh, sports will be modified, um, for the entire year. Uh, they will look different. There will be some rule changes, some rule adjustments, and people will have to, uh, accept those if they want to play. Um, and that, that work is ongoing. The sport committee's work is ongoing and should take shape. And we should see that hopefully in the next week or so. But that is not available just yet. But what the MIA sport committees are going to do is take the guidelines of, from the EEA and kind of streamline those into interscholastic sports. The EEA guidelines aren't really sports specific. They, they mention sports, they talk about, uh, levels, they talk about modalities of practice and play, but they don't necessarily spell out exactly how you can play soccer right now. And the sport committee is charged with, um, I think making that easier and, uh, easier to, um, to digest for everybody and, and make it easier for us to just kind of follow those guidelines per, for each sport. Leagues were directed to organize into geographic pods in order to minimize travel and limit opponents. As we all know, uh, transportation is going to be a challenge this year. Uh, we, we, we would fit into those guidelines with athletics. And we also want to limit our opponents, uh, to make a, what we call a geographic pod or a bubble. And there'll be no MIA playoffs this fall. Uh, next screen, please? Midwatch League is our, is our league that we're a part of. It's a 26-school league. Um, we plan to follow all EEA, DESI and MIA, as well as Board of Health and local district guidelines for athletic participation. Uh, face coverings will be utilized per guidelines. We have a plan in place for limiting spectators. Currently, that plan would be each member of a team would be given a lanyard or two lanyards, depending on where that, where that, uh, amount of spectators at an outdoor space, where that goes from right now. Um, that, therefore, we would not be charging tickets. We would just have people showing up. They'd have to have a lanyard visible and they'd have to have a face covering in order to, uh, attend a game for their child. No building access other than the home team. Uh, officials must arrive in uniform, ready to go. They won't be allowed in the building. No handshake ceremony. We're going to come up with some other kind of a sportsmanship gesture at the end of a contest. And transportation would all, would be per the guidelines. Next slide, please? Uh, continued midwatch league actions, organized into geographic pods of five schools rather than divisional alignments. Uh, typically we try to organize our league by enrollment. But given the situation, we needed to kind of tighten up our, our travel. And Littleton's current pod includes Groton, Dunstable, Maynard, North Middlesex and Tinsborough. Actually, uh, this might be, have changed us even recently. Right now it might be Air Shirley instead of Maynard, but the pods are still taking shape. Uh, shortened season competing against schools with, within your pod in order to reduce contact transmission. So if you had a pod of five schools, you'd have four opponent schools. As of right now, the plan would be to play each of those schools three times to get to a 12-season, a 12-game season in a sport. Let's, let's use soccer as an example. You'd play each team three times in 12 games. Uh, you know, a normal season for us in varsity soccer would be 18 games with playoffs, with preseason jamborees. It's going to be very much scaled back, obviously. Due to logistical concerns, middle school sports will not be conducted this fall by our league. It's a league decision. We just feel, given the amount of logistical issues we're going to be dealing with, there's no way we could run middle school sports this fall. We actually even had dialogue about JV1 and JV2. JV2 would be what used to consider the freshman level for the larger schools. Uh, but the mindset right now is that we want to try and offer JV and varsity at the high school level. If you look at middle school sports, oftentimes, again, staying on the soccer thread, kids have multiple, uh, avenues to play soccer. A high school student does not have those same avenues, uh, particularly a varsity athlete. We want to try and make sure we take care of varsity athletes first and then JV second. But middle school will, will not be conducted as a league this fall. Next slide, please? A few points to consider. Athletics and other co-curriculars, the arts, have always been a voluntary privilege. Parents, students and coaches have the option to participate or opt out. So if we go forward with athletics, it's, it's a very simple decision for people. If they're uncomfortable with it, they can simply opt out and not participate this year. Uh, that's a decision that each household can make. While the physical health of our students is our top priority during this pandemic, we must also be mindful of their mental and emotional health. We've seen this through our surveys. We've seen this, uh, in our own households. Um, kids are paying a heavy, heavy price right now. It's, it's very sad, uh, how much they're losing out on. I think that this year seniors are paying the, the largest toll socially. Um, and athletics plays a critical role in the overall health of many of our students. And during a normal year, our athletic participation rate hovers in the 69% range at LHS. We've been fortunate to have tremendous participation, um, over the years. We're very diverse in our offerings. We have a lot of sports for a small school. We get a lot of kids engaged in participating and all. Participation is always our number one goal. And, uh, we, we, we've been very fortunate. This will obviously have an impact on that. And hopefully someday life will get back to normal and we'll get our, our participation back to that range. But we'll, we'll see where this year falls. Next slide, please? So the discussion topics tonight, the first bullet is the primary topic. We have been asked in the Central Mass District and in, and within the midwatch league, next Thursday is, as of right now, the absolute deadline for all schools to commit to the fall one season or decommit. Because what we need to do is, we need to form these geographic pods and finalize them and get schedules made again. Um, I have schedules posted that I did way back in winter and early spring that are null and void, that are on our website that I, you know, I will remove or I'll be moving things around or adjusting them. But we have to get our schedules finalized. We have to make plans. We have to make transportation plans, uh, officials, uh, plans with the other schools. So next Thursday is the deadline for that to happen for all of our schools. Second bullet would, would coincide with the first one. Our remote learners eligible to participate. The third bullet maybe is just something that to ponder tonight. Are we adjusting athletic fees for this year? Are there still a good amount to take shape? And this is always a big dialogue point, um, but something to, to talk about. And then other questions and concerns. And we, we don't need to switch to it just yet, but there is another slide that will help on that third bullet as, uh, for maybe school committee members to look at regarding athletic fees, a little bit more information. But maybe we stay on this slide just to talk about that first bullet of what's our participation status for this fall?
Uh, I agree, Mike. I think that as a school committee, we first need to have a discussion about, um, if we think this is a good idea for our, our students and community. And if, if we do decide that this is something that we want to, uh, have go forward, then we can talk about the fees. Um, so at this point, I'll look to school committee members for any, uh, input, questions, comments? Uh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I think that we should try and normalize it as much for the kids as possible. Obviously, you know, um, football is, having that have be a fall two sport, you know, that makes sense. But sports where the, the safety is, you know, it can be managed. I think that if we can do that, uh, I'm on board with it.
All right, Brad?
I have a logistical question, um, for Mike. So if I understood correctly, you said visiting teams would not have access to buildings. Um, just like restrooms, um, how, how will they handle that? Or how would a visiting team, um, handle basic biology if they're visiting Littleton for three hours?
So at Alumni Field, I probably should have, I, I don't know if I put school buildings on the slide or just buildings. I thought I put school buildings, but at Alumni Field, we have an amenities building. That amenities building would be open to, to, uh, visitors as well as spectators and as well as the home team. Uh, at the high school, um, I guess we're going to need a porta potty or two delivered up here for, if we're playing soccer out back. Um, so I guess I was referring more to our school buildings as far as not, not allowing officials nor visiting teams to enter the high school.
Correct.
I think the point is like un-mas where they're, they're going into the locker room to change up and get the, the pregame speech that Mike Lynn practices every Thursday afternoon for Friday night. Um, that type of thing. Um, you know, Mike, what do we usually do at the high school? I know that, that there's two visiting bathrooms available at that far right door. Do, when we're playing soccer or baseball up there, are those available?
Yeah, that's typically where visitors would go. Um, as teams arrive at the high school, usually we'll use those two bathrooms. If there's a large group of kids that needs to use the bathroom, we might bring them down the hallway to the, to the, um.
Right. So similar to the amenities building at the high school, we could make those two, first two bathrooms because it's just literally two steps inside the door. They're not going in the hall, they're not going down the halls to the locker room. They could conceivably use those and we can use that as an amenity type building bathroom and then clean it appropriately at the end of the day to make sure that it's ready for school the next day.
Yeah, the, and the good thing about those two bathrooms, we have steel exterior doors that let you into that, that little lobby area. And then we have, we have interior wooden doors that can be locked right there, which we do that. So it is easy to let, let, uh, as a bus arrives, let kids in there to use the bathroom and they can't access the hallway from, from getting into those two bathrooms.
All right. Anybody else? All right. I mean, I, I guess I would like to ask each of you to just chime in. Matt seemed supportive of going through with, with Mike's proposed plans with the correct uh, guidelines and modifications. Timlin?
Yeah, I'm in support of trying to get these kids back into more of a, as much of a normalcy as we can with the right guidelines. Get them back out being physical, get them back out being interacting with one another. I, I'm in full support of it.
Okay, Brad?
Given all the caveats that go along with everything we're discussing, as we keep monitoring the public health considerations, we're able to revisit things as current, things currently stand, um, I support this.
Okay, Justin?
Same. Um, I, I think it's probably better than the alternative. So if we un-enroll from the league, the kids that want to play soccer are still going to find a way to play soccer. So we might as well have a program designed where the safety protocols are in place. We can supervise it appropriately and, um, and do our best to get back to normalcy, so.
Yeah. I, I, I appreciate that point, uh, along lines of what I wanted to bring up. I think people need to realize, if they don't already, that, uh, sports along the lines that uh sports along the lines of what Mike is suggesting are already taking place in Massachusetts. Um, basketball is available in a training mode. Um, no scrimmaging, but they can train. Uh, baseball teams are practicing. I actually think they're playing games. Um, and uh, there's other sports that are kind of doing the same thing. And Massachusetts frankly is more conservative in in um New Hampshire, they are allowing basketball games, you know, full basketball games, normal, very normal, no, no modifications other than the masking along the sidelines and the refs are masked and have different whistling technologies. Um, but Massachusetts has been very, very conservative. But having said that, they are have already allowed some of sport participation to occur. So I don't think we're pushing the boundaries in that regard. Um, and and Matt, uh, excuse me, Justin's right. If we don't give them the opportunity, they're gonna find another place to play. So having them under our jurisdiction and control, I think is is the safest way to go. I I don't think we need to vote on this. I just think Mike was asking for direction. But given that we've reached consensus on that, we need to think about the fees, you know, similar to the way we thought about the bus fee. So Mike, if uh, or whoever, can we bring that last slide up to take a look at?
We need to address the um, can remote students participate?
Oh, sorry. Great question. Yes, we we did last week and and I think we were, it was a quick consensus that we fully expect remote students are absolutely one hundred percent allowed to participate. Um.
So could we see the next slide, please? So this slide is just a I know some of the school committee members are are new. Our fee structure has been two hundred dollars per sport with a five hundred and fifty dollar family max annually. It has been, it is held at those numbers for, Mike Font might know it's uh, you know.
Same thing. We haven't raised them since we did them.
Yeah, I think it's been over a decade. Um, I I think I've been the AD. I think this is the year fifteen and I I think that has been the number since I've been doing this, but.
The only thing we've done is is add that hockey surcharge. That's the only addition we've made.
Right. So we did add a hockey surcharge a few years ago, trying to help with the ice cost. The table on the on the right, I just want to be clear that this is not a comprehensive look at the athletic budget. Uh, it's just the most pertinent points that we're probably would play into this discussion. Uh, just so people know, our fees and I we we used FY nineteen because last year's budget is uh skewed because we never end, we never ended up playing spring sports and it just uh those numbers are pretty much um, not very functional because of that. What you see fees compromise about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars uh nineteen FY nineteen. That's what they were in FY eighteen. They're actually a little bit higher, but they hover around there. Gate revenues in this particular year were twenty-nine thousand. Uh, the year before they were even higher because we was the year uh we had just opened the field and there was a lot of interest. And then the subsidized portion of the budget is around was around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Just so people are aware, that gate revenue number will probably be zero this year. Um, I can't see any scenario where we're gonna be charging tickets for people to enter games this year. It's just, it's not gonna happen in the timeframe that we're dealing with. Uh, we we make most of our gate revenue. Uh, football is number one. We do very well on night soccer games. We do okay on night field hockey games. Uh, basketball is 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 also very uh profitable at times. Ice hockey does pretty well and then we we have some night lacrosse games, but we won't be charging charging tickets for any of those games. I don't, I don't see that happening this year under the modified. And we're gonna have, we're always gonna have limits on how many spectators can be there. So that number will be zero. Uh, fees will depend upon what we decide to charge. And then the operating budget, obviously. Now down in the in the red, you're seeing uh our 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 expenses that are most pertinent to that would be impacted by our participation wherever it goes this year. Um, coaches' salaries in the last complete year were a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars with that's all the coaches from um for all three seasons for all three levels. Officials and game help that year were thirty-six, seven. Ice rental was seventeen thousand, one seventy-two, hence we have the surcharge. I can tell you right now, Groton School is our our home ice hockey rink for for practices and games. And as of right now, they are not letting outside customers on. We do not have an ice rink right now. We're we're in a bit of a jam with ice hockey. Um, police coverage. As you can see, we spent almost six thousand dollars on that. I don't see us I don't see us using police coverage like we have in the past because we're not going to have large crowds at games. You know, to that will that will need help with management. Um, if football does happen in in fall too, maybe we would have a police officer there if we're allowed to by that point have some student body there, but um, with with one mom or 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 mom and dad being able to attend, I'm not sure how much police coverage we're gonna need it in our different uh contests that have typically needed that. And then transportation.
Have you seen our moms and dads?
What's that?
At a football game. See, you're busy when you're at a football game. You haven't seen our moms and dads in the stands?
Well, I'll tell you one thing I think that could be a be a silver lining in this whole thing. If we pull off this modified athletic model is I do think that sportsmanship will will override everything. And I do think that you'll see coaches, parents, kids just so grateful to even be running around on a on a on a soccer field again, even if it's modified. I think that you'll just see a love of the game and I think that sportsmanship will prevail over everything because uh you know, we're we're not playing for championships. We're not playing for playoffs. So hopefully the moms and dads will get along too, Mike. I hope. And then transportation was sixty-eight thousand. Transportation could be tricky this year. In in every other year, you you know, you have a soccer program. Let's just take girls soccer. You're gonna have about forty-four girls on that program, forty to forty-four varsity and JV. And we're able to throw them all on one bus. And that will not be the case. So with a sport like soccer, if we field the varsity and a JV team, we're either gonna need two buses or we're gonna need to shuttle with one bus and stagger the start times of the games. So those are things that need to play out as we see what our if we have any attrition from our registrations or if any of that changes. But if we did field the varsity JV girl soccer team this year, we're whether it's a shuttle or or we do two buses, transportation could be uh an increase in cost. Not over that number because I don't, we're not gonna be transferring because we're talking about playing one-third less contests. We're talking about no playoffs. We're talking about no preseason scrimmages. So you'll see less contests, but transportation to those contests could be higher conceivably than it would normally be for game by game. So Mike, I don't know if you.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. So given that, I appreciate Mike summing that up. Uh, I think he hit all the the salient points and the and the the different budget line items that that we need to consider. Um, what the impact would be uh in terms of how the season's gonna be conducted and what participation level might be and what we think is fair to charge for a fee, given that it's probably pretty obvious to all of us that based on the uh reduced schedule for the at least the fall season that we're starting off with in the uh modifications to the games, this is not gonna be the same varsity or JV experience that our students and families are used to. Um, so given that, do we think that it would be appropriate to consider reducing the fee somewhat with a similar thought philosophy that we had regarding the uh transportation fee? Thoughts?
Um, my thought would be I hope I get a little support this time. My thought would be that we leave the fees unchanged. I mean, the alternative is they go somewhere else for soccer and it's probably more expensive to go play club soccer someplace else than just to play soccer for your town. Um, yeah, I think I think the children and the families are anxious to get back out there again. I think it's a value. Um, I would, I would be in favor of, I think it's fair to probably leave the fees the same.
All right, anybody else? Timlin?
Um, I just have a question. Um, we have scholarships in place for those students. I know that there's probably a lot of families. There probably will be more families now too that are going to have to come in and ask for a scholarship because of family hardships during this time. So will we have enough to cover those students?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. We, yep, that's not a problem.
Okay. I mean, as a parent of a varsity soccer player who, you know, a senior that's playing soccer, I would be willing to pay the two hundred dollars. I think that it might be if we could cut it. I don't know how much by because if, how many games did you say, Mike, that they played? Eighteen?
So Timlin, uh, yeah, if we just stay on the soccer thread, uh, typical soccer season would be eighteen games. You'd have a scrimmage plus a preseason jamboree and then depending on how successful the team is that year, they could have some.
Go on to scholarships.
Yeah, so we're playing, right now the plan is to play twelve games within a pod. Um, again, I don't have the schedules finalized. We we thought we did, but then some things changed. And so if I could always, I'd be happy to come back to the school committee when when the pods are done and I do have schedules and I I think I could kind of have more solid numbers for people, but we just wanted to give you a a kind of a snapshot tonight.
So what about, I mean, I know you said golf and cross country are also, or how are their, how are their seasons being?
So golf, golf will also be probably twelve matches. Uh, they they could play the same amount of soccer. We typically play about sixteen golf matches just because it's tight to fit them all in. Uh, field hockey is the same as soccer. We play eighteen with playoffs and preseason uh scrimmages. Cross country is different. Any of the running sports, you're you're talking to much about much fewer events, just the nature of the sport. They typically run one to two meets per week. Um, you know, cross country would be minimally four meets, maximally eight meets, uh, depending on if we played, if we ran against each school once or if we ran against each school twice, or if we did six meets, you know, doubled up on a couple, but everything will be scaled back. Um.
Brad. So in response to that, and I appreciate that, Mike, um, if everything's we scaled back, I'm unlike Justin. I I would probably um, favor scaling back the fees proportionally, two thirds, three quarters. I'm wondering though, um, if if everything's to be scaled back, does that mean some of the expenses, not just transportation, but um like stipends, will those also be scaled back or we expect those to stay at the same level?
That is something that uh we would have to negotiate.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, if if we didn't have a sport take place, then there's no negotiation there. If we don't have an event, a a an activity and we don't hire the staff, then we don't, that doesn't have to be negotiated. But if if we want, if we felt that it warranted uh a reduction in in salary because of a reduction in in the amount of of games or work, however we want to look at it, we would have to negotiate that.
This is where I'm torn and I probably just don't have enough information and probably can't get it. Um, I'm inclined to um to ask if we're offering less to the families to ask less of them. At the same time, as a school committee member, we've already talked about this, one of our three charges is being responsible stewards of the budget. Um, so I don't that's where, that's what I'm thinking about now.
All right, Matt?
I'm kind of in Brad's boat as far as, um, I don't think I think this students can still get a lot out of the athletics as as it's presented. So that I, I don't know, I'm I'm going back and forth. I'm still deciding, but.
Let me, let me give, I appreciate that. Let me give my perspective. I I think this, it's a little bit less clear to us exactly what's going to happen with sports. I mean, we know we're gonna run buses, right? The only question is how many weeks? Uh, but we're gonna have to run the buses. The sports are a little different. Um, we may find that we only get the fall one season and then there that's it for athletics. And um, we also have a a the the cap there. Um, you know, I I can see Justin's point. I think that we're we're striving to provide an opportunity. I don't think we're gonna lose anybody because of the fee. The fee's been built in. People know how to deal with it. Timlin raised a good point. If if there are people that are struggling, there there's a scholarship opportunity. Um, and I think that we're gonna be revisiting sports sooner than we're revisiting busing. I think that we can leave it in place for now. And then if we feel like there's another reduced season or no season or anything else, then it's gonna kind of inform how we want to proceed. Um, so at this point, I don't have a problem leaving it. Most families aren't gonna hit the cap in the first uh season. Um, you'd have to have three kids. Uh, three, three and a half kids playing. Not all of us meet that requirement. Um, so, and I do have one other thing I want to bring up, but I want to do it after we see if we can reach a consensus or for if we if we need feel like we need to vote on it just to make sure we're not misinterpreting our each of our stances. That's okay too. Uh, but at the moment, I I I'll I'll back Justin on this one and 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 go into his camp on, let's just leave it with the way it is for the time being and we can revisit it as we see how this all unfolds.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
I'm fine with that, too.
All right, Brad, what do you think?
Yeah, that that it's fine. As long as we are, um, I think we should aggressively aggressively advertise the possibility of scholarships.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one other thing that that I had a brief conversation with Mike Lynn about is he is he approached me with this idea. So there there are no middle school sports because the mid-watch league has made a determination that they're not gonna offer it. There isn't, so there's no schedule for Mike to go get, even if we wanted to provide interscholastic middle school level competition. So that that's off the table. However, do we want to consider providing intramurals or skills and drills for soccer and field hockey? Mike, what else do we typically offer at the middle school level in the fall?
Um, fall sports for middle school are boys and girls soccer, field hockey and boys and girls cross country.
Okay.
Cross country being somewhat folded into our high school cross country program, but nonetheless open to middle school kids.
Okay.
Wasn't that taken away last year, though? I mean, like they, the.
That was, um, well, we had to break away from getting a middle school to participate at varsity level waiver, which was, which was honestly probably a long time coming in a positive. But so what what would have happened this fall had been this been a normal fall, you would have seen still the same two cross country coaches still working with a seven through twelve age group. But we were, we would have added, um, we would have added some middle school specific meets. That was the plan for the fall. So the middle schoolers would have had their own meets. They would no longer be uh participate in the varsity meets. Still the same two coaches, but unfortunately, that's not gonna be able to happen. Um, we were, we were taking a step, I think, in the positive direction, but now we're unable to do that.
Right. So, well, I I appreciate that. Hold on. I just want to offer one other thought about this. My concern is I think it's a good idea to to try to offer some type of after-school athletic program for the middle school level. But I think we need to like poll the parents or see about enrollment because if if we don't get a a reasonable number of kids that want to do it, I don't think it's worth paying our coaches to to supervise ten kids in a in a particular sport. But if we're at the, you know, close to the normal numbers, seventy-five percent to one hundred percent of the enrollment, I think it's worthwhile to 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 take the 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 cost of it, pay the coaches and do it. Um, but I don't think we have that information. So I I this would be a preliminary decision to to offer it and then we have to see how it played out. So that's, I think you guys hear where I'm at. I'm curious what you guys, the rest of you guys think about that.
Go ahead now, Timlin.
Thanks, Matt. I I mean, I have an eighth grader and I want him in sports. I, he needs, he needs to get out and move and get out from behind a screen. Um, I would I would sign him up for all three sports that you offered so that he was there on different days. So I and I think a lot of parents that I've talked to are just ready to get their kids out and moving, especially in the in the nicer fall weather before we may all get stuck in the house again come winter. So I'm I'm for helping out or doing, yes, that for middle school.
Parent of two middle schoolers, I would concur, um, anything that they could do. Um, when you say intramurals, um, we were talking sports specific, like if it's not just gonna be a hodgepodge of different sports.
No, right. I I'm thinking like you would have the soccer, you'd sign up for soccer and you go to soccer every day and by it it's not really in the mirrors in Littleton because we don't have enough kids to say, oh, we're gonna form a ten-team league of kids. But they could scrimmage, right, with the same restrictions that the JV and varsity team, but they would scrimmage against each other. They were not gonna scrimmage against there. They're not gonna scrimmage against Maynard. They're just gonna do drills and skills and scrimmaging and mini-games, whatever the coach thinks is appropriate. But you would be a soccer kid every day or a field hockey kid every day or a cross country kid every day.
And they'd be paying fees in this model? And they'd be paying fees in this model?
Yeah, because we'd be at, we'd be paying the coaches. We would expect that we would pay the coaches. Although you bring a good point. If you don't get to play games, do we still charge the fee? That's a good point, Brad. I don't know. What do you think?
We charge a minimal fee.
I'd agree.
So if it's, if I can chime in, if, if it's a club wherever, if it's a club or a school activity. We usually have that student activity fee, which is $50 a year per student. For a club activity. Alright, you wanna look at it like that?
And typically intramurals, I want to say is an hourly rate for, I believe that, uh, maybe it's a stipend. I can't remember. We have, we don't really have it at the high school. But I don't know if intramurals is an hourly or a stipended rate at the middle school.
We'll, we'll negotiate that with the union and figure that, what, we'll figure out what works for, for both.
The, the other question that would have is, right now, middle school sports is restricted to seventh and eighth graders. Would that still continue to be the case or would we open it up to sixth graders as well?
So what Mike is talking more about now is an intramural concept. So intramurals has, is open to sixth graders at the middle school. Interscholastic sports has been reserved for seventh and eighth graders, just because the interest, there's so much interest typically, we couldn't, we couldn't bring on the sixth graders. So what you're talking about now is an intramural or a, a skill development program as opposed to like what you said, Matt, just. Cause I don't know how many kids would be interested in a hodgepodge of things, but if it's a soccer kid and they have an opportunity to. Work skills and drills and some scrimmage work, they, that, that could, that could work at the middle school level and I would say that. With the middle school structure, I would say six, you know, we, we could involve the sixth graders. I mean, with an intramural type structure.
I'm all for it.
Me too.
Alright, Brad and Justin?
I'd support that.
Yeah, same.
Okay, alright, Mike, uh, let me know if you, if you feel like you need more direction from us. I think our, our, our direction was pretty clear at both levels. And also clear about the fees at the, the high school. It'll be the same for the time being at the middle school. We'll look at it as a, an activity fee. Um, and Steve Mark will deal with that accordingly. Is that alright?
So you're saying the, this intramural concept we're talking about, the $50 annual fee would cover the entry for, for any, any uh, student at the middle school?
Yep. Alright.
No questions? I believe we're all set?
Yeah, we are uh, at the end of the meeting. Yeah, so.
Surprisingly enough, I, I have a question. It's not necessarily from Mike though, it's, but it's related. Um, thinking about extracurriculars and co-curriculars. Has me think about the other stuff we offer, especially theater and band and choir. I'm not expecting us to talk about it now. I'd like us to talk about it sometime about when we can, if we're gonna get guidance from the state, if we're gonna get guidance from. From Desi about um, what's safe and how we can move forward with these parts for our students extracurricular wise.
I feel comfortable telling you that that is, uh, both sides on the negotiating table have already started to think about that and, and trying to. Determine what the best way to make that work for both staff and, and administration and students.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mike.
But you'd be right, Brad. The, the, even if we want to do it, that we have to consider what the constraints would be. Relative to public health guidelines, just in the same way that Mike Lynn's wrestling with it for, for the uh, for athletics.
Absolutely.
I, I, the point I think you're making is, yeah, we just, we're not just worried about the athletes. There are other reasons that we want to support. And other kids that we want to support, those other al- alternative extracurricular activities that we know are important. So we'll get on it. We'll get on it. Alright, um, yes, we are at the end of the meeting. Uh, I will offer uh, input from interested citizens. If we have any more, I'm not gonna offer it long.
No more.
Alright, I appreciate everyone attending. I appreciate LCTV and Bettina and Dorothy for supporting us. Uh, I will remind everybody that right now we are only scheduled for our joint meeting next Wednesday with the Board of Health. And we will not be meeting as a school committee next Thursday. Um, but I fully expect that we will meet again as a school committee the Thursday after that, which will be the last Thursday before school opens. Alright, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Excuse me.
Second.
Yeah, most of them made it seconded. Uh, Brad Austin?
Brad Austin, yes.
Timlin?
Timlin Rossius, yes.
Justin?
Justin McCarthy, yes.
Matt?
Matt Hutton, yes.
Mike Fontella says yes as well. Thank you, everyone.